All right, I'm sorry about the slightly delayed start here. I'd like to call this meeting of the city, special meeting of the city council, to order. We will begin, as we usually do, with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join me in the pledge.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We are going to have an item that we need to deal with here in a second, just of a logistical nature, but before we get to that, I'm going to ask Jeff Malpe, our city manager, to explain a little bit about the seating arrangements for tonight, because we obviously have a packed house and there are places that people can sit. So Jeff.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have set up additional space just sort of diagonally from City Hall at the adult community center in the Chestnut Room where we have staff. There's a viewing area for people to be able to watch the meeting, and there's an arrangement for those folks that would like to speak in this meeting to be notified, to sign up to speak over there and to come back over. So if you'd like to be more comfortable, you can just head on over to the ACC. Jeff, it's that way, right? The ACC? Adult Community Center? Okay. I think it's right that way. Okay. Not the Elms?
Should we vote on it?
Not the Elms. I don't...
It's not... It's at the ACC, right?
Yeah, ACC. So that's what we've got.
Thank you, Jeff. Ron, I think you had a request that you wanted to make.
Yeah, I just wanted to add one item under Council Communications. It'd just be a single item, and it takes four fifths of the council to allow that to happen.
For the benefit of the public, we're doing that because the item got, it's a standard part of our agenda. It got left off by a computer glitch, and we can't add items to the agenda, except, as Ron said, with a four fifths vote. So is there a motion to add Council Communications per Ron's request?
So moved.
Second?
I second.
Okay. Motion and second. Crystal, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Gocut?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Obert?
Yes.
So that makes the four fifths, so we will add that actually right now.
Okay. All right. Just a brief statement and comment. In the last couple of weeks, there have been some allegations by a couple of members of the community of a violation of the San Carlos Code of Ethics policy by our mayor. According to the code, when it is the mayor who is subject to an allegation violating the Code of Ethics, it falls upon the vice mayor to interpret and investigate the alleged violation. So therefore, I've asked our city attorney to give us an advisory opinion at this time. Mr. Rubens?
Mr. Vice Mayor Collins, members of the council, I did review the allegation of a violation of the council Code of Conduct and Ethics policy. The allegation arises out of a sentence in the introduction of the policy that's 16 pages long, and I've reviewed the entire policy, and it's my opinion that the Code of Conduct and Ethics is not implicated by the complaint in question. The Code of Conduct and Ethics was not intended to affect the rights of individual council members to take positions on legislative matters, and I think, although tonight is a study session, that's really the issue that the council will be giving direction on in the future. So that's my opinion. I do not believe the Code of Conduct and Ethics has been implicated by the actions taken by the mayor.
Okay. Thank you. Any other council member comments? Although we are requesting that we keep it brief and not do our normal litany. Okay. Fair enough. Then we will move on to public comment for items that are not on the agenda, since I presume most folks, although not necessarily everybody, is here for our study session item. This is a time for anybody who has desire to speak to us on basically any topic other than that. We will, in fact, take public comment from everybody who wishes to speak to us on that item after we have a staff presentation and some question and answer from the DIAS. So, Crystal, I actually don't think I see any cards here, other than for the topic itself.
I believe that's true.
Okay. And I just will check one more time. Is there anybody who actually wants to talk about something other than that item? Okay. Seeing none, we will move on to that item. Oh, actually, technically, we have a report from closed session, but, Mr. Rubens, Jeff, Greg, I don't think we had a closed session.
There was no closed session tonight.
Then we will move on to item 5A, the study session for tonight. Study session on all options related to proposed disposition of the North Crestview site, APN 049041050, including property exchange, sale, ballot measure issues, and proceeds and potential expenditures. Jeff?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. My name's Jeff Malpe. I'm the city manager here in San Carlos. Like to welcome this large audience to City Hall. It's always nice to see a big turnout when we're talking about important issues that face the city. There's obviously been a lot of community dialogue that's taken place on this issue over the last couple of weeks, as the council's aware, but the public may not be fully aware. This is really the beginning of this issue. This is the first public dialogue the city council's having on this, with one minor exception. The city council, last September, talked a bit about the Crestview, the North Crestview property that we'll get to in just a minute. In terms of what its value was, the council was curious as to what its value was and what might be some of the options that the city could do with it, which triggered the city pursuing an appraisal, and that information is in my report this evening. So this is really the beginning of the discussion. The city council has not been, has not made any decisions. The city council will not be making any decisions tonight. If we get through our presentation, the Q and A, and the lengthy public comment that I'm sure we'll have this evening, then the council would begin to get into dialogue, which will hopefully provide some direction for staff so we can begin to focus. What we're talking about here, what's in front of us, is really a series of opportunities that tie to one piece of property, a valuable piece of land that the city's owned since the mid-1970s. With any opportunity, there are always challenges, and because we have a lot of different possible opportunities in front of us, there are a lot of different possible challenges, and a lot of those have been kicked around on websites and in the community, which is why I wanted to start with a few quotes, because I think, you know, most of us in this room are going to experience some of these things this evening and probably have experienced some of these over the last couple of weeks. One thing that, you know, that folks that know me have heard me say from time to time is the Theodore Roosevelt quote about the best thing you can do is the right thing, and the next best thing you can do is the wrong thing, and the worst thing you can do is nothing. And I think that sums up what we're, the council's going to be wrestling with this evening, because all those choices, depending on your point of view, are out there for you. And I know there are differing points of view in the community on the various options that we've tried to outline in the staff report. Staff's role really is to try to, in a very compressed timeframe here on this issue, provide some facts and some input that the council can begin to use to help formulate their opinion, to, you know, ultimately arrive at the direction we need to begin to pursue an actual outcome to this opportunity, whatever that opportunity is that we learn from this evening. And of course, the council is elected by the people, and we're going to hear from a lot of people. I know I've received a lot of emails over the last few weeks on various, from various sides of this issue. In fact, a few sides that I hadn't even considered until I got those emails. So that public process, that public dialogue, has already had an influence on some of the information you're going to receive tonight. I'm sure it's going to have more influence as we move forward. And then ultimately Churchill's famous quote about perfection and change, and what we are talking about is change, and there's going to be a lot of obstacles to this change, as there are with any project that's faced with the city, certainly anyone of significant value to the community, affecting a lot of different people. There are going to be obstacles. There's going to be challenges, and as with any of the projects that we tackle, those challenges fall to the staff to be worked out, turned into opportunities, and ultimately brought before the city council for final approval. So without any further stage setting, we'll get into the presentation here. It's not a particularly lengthy presentation. The staff report wasn't particularly lengthy either. We tried to provide a number of attachments that would be backup documentation to help stimulate thought and provide some of the pros and cons as we see them. One thing I'd like to point out and just make clear is, you know, this is a work in progress. This was put together very quickly. You know, we haven't done a large study on this issue. There's a lot of different boxes that are going to have to be checked before anything actually becomes a reality. Even if the council were to settle very strongly on a direction tonight, there still may be information and other hurdles that come up in the future that may change or reconfigure the council's thinking. So these are very early days. I thought we'd start by, you know, a picture we had taken, an aerial photo of the Crestview site for those folks who aren't familiar with it. This area right here is fairly steep as it leads up, so when you hear people from the community that are familiar with this project talking about some of the obstacles this is to development, this is a big one here. This land back here is San Francisco watershed, and this is the famous or infamous, depending on your point of view, potential I-280 connector, and you can just see a piece of 280 up here in the corner. There are townhomes basically surrounding this property that were all built in the mid-to, mid, late 70s to early 80s, I believe. And here's the Terolinda site that's gotten a lot of discussion. This is, you can just see a piece of the school really down here, and then the backside where there's kind of a dirt ball field now. This area of the property, I don't want to call it steep, but it's definitely sloping. Doesn't appear that way. And then I think if anybody here from the school district is, can correct me, I think this is a preschool, is it not, that they're...
Montessori school.
Yeah, Montessori school, okay. That they're operating right now out of sort of portables. So this in general is the land that's being talked about or proposed as a swap. I believe there's a section over here that, and this is slightly larger, this triangle than the Crestview site, and I believe this area here is kind of on the school district's mind for a small courtyard-type facility to help service the schools. But I think at this point, you know, everything is still subject to discussion with the school district on this area outlined in red. And then real quick, I wanted to show you a video. This is the Terolinda site, just to help familiarize folks who aren't particularly familiar with the school. This would be the access point to the back of the property through the school, how you get there now. Now you're kind of looking from the backside of the property. You can see you're looking down at the ball field now, so the school's out in that distance. So here are the famous eight options, and as you'll notice, there are nine. Because no matter how much thought we put into it, we knew that there were going to be other ideas that would pretty quickly rise to the surface, and over the weekend, a council member mentioned another one that seemed like a viable option for the council to consider, to me, and that's the one that's kind of ruining the nice pattern out there on the bottom left-hand corner, which is the lease Crestview and partner with the school district on some sort of a field at TL. So these are, these are sort of in broad instances, I think primarily the possibilities that are in front of the council. And there are many different ways you could parse each one of these in terms of sort of suboptions and many other decisions that the council would need to be made. So tonight, I'm hoping that we'll stay sort of at a high level on these types of issues, rather than really start to do a deep dive, because, one, we just don't have a lot of deep dive information for you, and, two, it's really more important that we kind of tackle these big issues in terms of what is the desire of the council moving forward here. So I'm just going to read them off real quick. You could decide to sell the property at North Crestview to the school district, very, you know, straight real estate transaction, where instead of putting it on the market, you're saying, you know, "We've identified a buyer. We know what we want for it. Here you go," and we move forward from there. We've got a concept of a trade and/or a trade and cash to the district, where we would trade property at North Crestview for a portion of the Terolinda campus and work out some sort of equitable financial arrangement in terms of the difference in value of the two properties. You would presumably then build a park under that option, or some type of park and recreation improvements to the site at TL. You have another option that's basically exactly the same as the one I just mentioned, only it says you don't want to build a park or recreational facilities on the backside of TL. You'd like to see housing built back there. Now, it's currently in a zone for single-family homes. Years ago, the city and the school district had contemplated building affordable teacher housing on the backside of TL, from what I understand. So those, that's an option that's been discussed in the past, and just wanted to put it out there as an option. Moving forward, under that option, you would trade property but then sell the TL property to a developer for housing purposes, at which time you would, the council would need to decide what they were going to do with the proceeds from that sale. Presumably, you would invest it into other infrastructure capital projects within the city of San Carlos. You could say that you're not interested in a school at North Crestview, that you believe that that area, if it's going to do anything, should be housing, and you can put it on the market to sell to a housing developer. Again, pretty straightforward. You could say, "We don't care what happens to the property. We're going to put it on the market, and whoever wants to buy the property can make an offer, and we'll evaluate the offers as they come in." You could say that you want to keep the Crestview property and develop it as a park. It's currently in the city's general plan and zoning as a park right now. You could, again, lease it to the school district for the purposes of building a park and partner with them. In other words, you'd say, "You keep TL, we'll lease you North Crestview property, and rather than build a park back there, we'll partner with you on improving a field that would be available to the city and the community during non-school hours." Of course, there's the developed I-280 connection that was talked about in the early 1990s, and that's probably one of the few options up here that can actually be worked in with other options. In other words, you can't really build a park and a field and open space and housing all on this four acres. That just doesn't make sense. But you might be able to do, you might be able to include a provision for retaining an easement so that a I-280 connection could be at least preserved as an option for the future. And then, of course, you can just keep the property as is, leave it as open space, you know, say, "These were all great ideas, but, you know, we think it's perfect the way it So a little bit about the North Crestview site and a little bit of the facts that we know so far. The North Crestview site was originally known as Site 9, and it was owned by the San Carlos Elementary School District. It was used during World War II as a dog training facility. Was sold by the school district in the early 1970s to a developer for multifamily housing, and the developer was required by the city to deed eight acres as parkland to the city in 1974. Four of those acres were, are Vista Park right across the street, and four of those acres are the North Crestview site, which the city's general plan in 2010 identified as a park site, and the park's master plan identifies for future park and recreation-type improvements. The property was recently appraised for $13.9 million. The city received an unsolicited offer of $18 million to build multifamily housing, similar to the townhouses that are around it, on the neighboring properties. That offer's currently expired. It had a date. I think it expired a couple of weeks ago now. The staff hasn't pursued any conversations with the developer. We've had two conversations from their broker, one that, when he brought in their proposal, but haven't pursued any additional information, not knowing what the council's preferences were. We didn't want to get out in front of the council and create any more controversy than is already out there on this issue. Any sale or trade would require a 50-plus-one percent of the voters in San Carlos.
Mr. Malpe, it's really, isn't it 50% plus one?
I'm sorry, 50% plus one.
Yeah.
Yeah, the percentage mark is in the wrong spot. Of voters to do anything other than keep it as a park. You could develop it as a park, or you could just keep it as open space, but pretty much any of the other options out there in front of you, maybe other than just preserving it for 280 connection, though you're still going to have to, I think, have a vote of the people at some point if you're going to build it. The city attorney's memo outlines a secondary approach that I think is a false choice. That's really going to be the one recommendation that you hear from me tonight, is, I believe, regardless of what you do, you're going to need to take this to the voters, unless it's do nothing, in which case you don't. The alternate approach, again, which the city attorney can talk a little bit more about, requires a four fifths of the council. It requires the city council to make a lot of findings that, at the staff level, we're not comfortable today, and that doesn't mean things won't change as we go down this road in terms of recommending to the council any way that would require you to do that. Any development, let's see, any development other than as a park will also require amending the city's general plan and the zoning. As I've mentioned, it's currently in the general plan and zoned as a park, so if you're going to do a school or, you know, road or housing, it's going to require general plan and zoning changes of the city council. Talked about the I-280 connection. The school district's proposed a trade, plus cash for similar sites. The TL campus, that four-plus-acre site on TL was appraised at $12.5 million, and remember the, a couple of slides ago, the Crestview property was appraised at $13.9 million. And then, of course, we had an offer for $18 million in the last couple of months on the North Crestview property. We haven't conducted any specific land use or environmental studies of either North Crestview or Terolinda, and we can, maybe in the Q and A, get more into that if you're interested. Again, that may be a level of detail that we don't need to get into tonight, as, you know, we can probably talk for a long time on that, but you will need to do some land use as this moves forward. There will be some SEQA requirements if you're going to do anything, either with TL as a city or with North Crestview, either the school district or the city. So keep or dispose North Crestview. You know, why keep it and how to dispose of it are kind of one of the first questions. You know, again, keep it as it is, build the park, build the 280 connection, or some other ideas. You guys always have good ideas. The community always has good ideas, and we want to be open to those in the dialogue as well. We've covered the market and sell options. We've covered the sale to the district. We've talked about selling it to a developer. We've talked about trading it for the Terolinda site. We've talked about the possibility of a lease, and we've talked about other possibilities. And again, it's going to, and you're going to hear me repeat some of these things, because I'd like it to be real clear what we're talking about for the council and the community tonight and what we're not talking about. Would require a 50-plus-one, thanks, Bob, of the voters to be able to do pretty much all these things, other than keep it as is. Likely choices, again, open space, finished park. This is for the future of the North Crestview site. You can see open space. You can see a finished park. You can see housing. You can see the 280 connection. You can see a combination thereof. Some of the pros and cons, and obviously, you know, we can probably make this list on both sides on all these issues, very long. This isn't meant to be all-encompassing. These are just some of the ones that immediately spring to mind. The pros of open space, it's there for all the visitors to explore. It's a natural environment. It's in a very beautiful setting. It doesn't create traffic or other negative quality-of-life impacts on the neighborhood that exists there today. The cons are that the charter school will need to be built somewhere in our community. San Carlos is not a big town. We're a town of about 28,000 people. It's a fairly small community, and this school needs to be built somewhere. The voters in San Carlos have approved a bond, recognizing the need to expand our schools, and that expansion is going to take place somewhere in the community, if not at the North Crestview site, somewhere else, which is going to have all of its own impacts, many of them the same as the impacts that would be on the Crestview neighborhood, like traffic impacts at existing school sites, or opportunity costs of proceeds from a sale to fund other city programs and projects. So in other words, if we keep it as open space, we've got a very valuable asset that we're not investing. Part of the packet shows that the city has a $225 million unfunded capital improvement need in this city. A lot of that has to do with storm drains. There's a lot of interesting projects that aren't on the list that the council's talked about, like community centers and aquatic centers and those kinds of things that aren't even factored into the $225,000.
$225 million.
$225 million. Thank you again, Bob. And again, another con from keeping it as open space is you don't get any new park or any new fields, whether that is at the North Crestview site or at the TL site. Build, operate, and maintain a city park. The pros of that, of course, are sports fields. We've done a number of studies the city council has over the years showing a need. Some of the studies have shown for up to 100% increase in the amount of available field space the city has, some a little bit less than that. Another pro in building, operating, and maintaining a city park would be that it serves the same area of the community. Now, we're talking about building it up on North Crestview. Be consistent with the general plan and the zoning, and it doesn't require any sort of ballot initiative or anything to be put in front of the voters to be able to do that. You may need to go to the voters and put a bond measure to be able to afford to build it, but that would, that'll be a separate and secondary issue to what does the council want to do here. Of course, cons, like with any, any development, you've got traffic, you've got noise, you've got other impacts on the neighborhood. Again, the charter school's going to have to be built somewhere, so those impacts, you know, whether they take place in this neighborhood or some other neighborhood, their impacts that are going to be the same. 400 kids are going to go to school at a new school someplace. Loss of recreation space at Heather, that's a possibility related to a series of options that the school district board has to make, again, sort of showing what a complicated issue this is and how deep you can get into it, what a spider web it quickly becomes. But that's one of the possibilities as an alternative to building the charter school at North Crestview. Heather and Arundel are the two primary alternatives. Last I heard, that the school district board was talking about, and if it's built at Heather, there's a nice field that's widely used by sports groups in the community. That would be, at least a good portion of that would be taken out, which would be a con certainly to the community, and it would exacerbate the studies that we've already done, showing a lack of, and a need for additional playing field space in our community. Traffic at existing schools. There's already traffic around Heather School or Arundel School, so if it's going to be built as part of an existing campus or at TL, which I don't think the school district is talking about right now, but I know it's something they had talked about early on, and we're very sensitive to the fact that that is a very congested area around school time, and if you're going to add a school to that campus or add additional students over the years, as the school district is projecting their schools to grow, that's a very poor area to do it from the existing traffic issues that is there. And then, of course, a con is funding for being able to build that. Build a charter school on-site of North Crestview would provide the school district with the needed land for new schools. It meets its land area requirements for charter school, which is a little different than other school facilities, from what I understand. I'm not an expert. Charter school recreational facilities that are built as part of the school, the school district has told us, could be available to the public for use after school. They're envisioning, I think, a small field and... They're envisioning, I think, a small field and play area as part of the charter school. Avoids using land at other school sites, which we just talked about. There's less traffic impact at existing schools that are struggling, neighborhoods that are struggling with the traffic impacts now. There's new school in a new area of the community, and then there's a possibility, we've talked with the school district, if this were to happen, if the council wanted to go down this road, there's a possibility for designing the site in such a way that we could at least preserve easement for a future 280 access point, if the council so desired. Cons, of course, there are lots of impacts to neighborhoods. You know, anybody that lives around the school knows that there are real impacts at certain times of the day from schools. I think it's certainly a fair complaint, something that we should put out there, but we should also point out that there are schools all over our community that deal with that, with those same issues. And when you have an expanding school population, and the fact that this was originally identified as a school site, shows that at least at some point in the past, this community was envisioning a school there. Loss of park space in the neighborhood, of course, that's a concern in any area. You've got open space or a park that you're taking out. That's a real concern. And then, again, it's not consistent with the current general plan or zoning, which the council could change. And then, a con would be that you wouldn't get, you wouldn't get your new park or fields at TL, though I don't quite understand that one. Build multifamily housing. This would be more housing stock in the city. Certainly, the council's heard a lot about that the last few years, the need for housing, especially multifamily housing. This is a type of housing model that's worked very well in that neighborhood. I think the people that live up there are very happy with that type of model. It seems to serve a real nice community niche within San Carlos. Selling it and building housing would provide more funds for the city to fund programs and projects throughout the community. May be viewed by the neighborhood as less intrusive than some of the other options that are being talked about. I don't want to speak for the neighborhood, but as I've monitored the conversation, certainly some folks have brought that up, which is why I've listed it here. Cons, the school district doesn't get the needed land for the charter school, so the charter school's going to have to be built somewhere. Either the school district's going to find land in town to buy, or they're going to build on their existing campus. Loss of potential parks and sports fields for the community. Again, there's an opportunity cost to not doing this at TL, so you kind of lose what you don't necessarily have. You potentially lose Heather, and you potentially lose the ability to have parks and rec, you don't, do definitely lose the potential to have parks and recreation facilities on North Crestview under this option. More traffic and noise at existing school sites. It's not consistent with the general plan and zoning, so that would have to be changed. Build the I-280 connection. Certainly, you'd have easier access for residents in San Carlos to I-280. You could decrease traffic in other, more heavily congested portions of the city. We haven't talked to the city of Belmont, but certainly, we know from past discussions that have taken place about the barrier on Hallmark, that there is a relationship to the city turning down a 280 connector years ago, and that if San Carlos was interested in pursuing an I-280 connection, and if that could happen, I think we would find at least Belmont willing to talk about taking down the barrier, which would have, not only, I think, positive traffic implications for our community, but Belmont as well. Now, the cons. Doesn't provide school district with needed land, and it may require new school built on existing sites, thus impacting, again, traffic and noise in those areas, as we've discussed. Loss of recreation space in Crestview and neighboring neighborhoods. New traffic and noise in the neighborhood. So if you're going to be, and not just this neighborhood, a number of neighborhoods, you would be significantly changing traffic patterns throughout our city and our small region as a result of this. And certainly, that's something that you would want to study in more detail, I'm sure, before you'd want to commit the city to doing this and the expense associated with it. Caltrans has not agreed, which, of course, they would need to agree, and the San Francisco PUC would have to be involved as well, as this land, this small piece of land between what's there and our land is part of the San Francisco watershed. And then, the last option which came up, which was lease the North Crestview site to the school district. Pros, again, the city would generate revenue from that. We were able to come up with an estimate of $595,000 a year. This is primarily based on commercial leases, because that's what we were able to find in a very short period of time. This came up over the weekend. We got some information today. So I would take that number as just sort of a starting point to put out there and not put a lot of specific stock in it at this point. I've got a lot of questions, but I received that number at 4 o'clock today. So again, take it with a grain of salt. It's a starting point in a longer conversation in terms of what the lease value of that property is. Another pro would be partnering with the school district to develop a portion of TL for recreation use. So in other words, instead of building a park at TL, we jointly invest in a field improvement project on the backside of TL, and perhaps either the city puts money into that or negotiates a more favorable lease rate on the Crestview property for the school district. There are lots of different variations that could play out. This would result in more sports fields and other recreational facilities in the TL area, and provides the school district with the needed property for a school facility. Cons, of course, again, are traffic and noise impacts to the Crestview neighborhood, loss of park space in the Crestview neighborhood, and not consistent with our land use and planning that's currently in place. The key initial questions that the staff is hoping the council can address either tonight or at your next meeting, depending on how much time you have tonight, are, does the city council desire to keep the North Crestview site or dispose of it? Keeping it's pretty clear. You're either going to keep it for a park, or you're going to keep it for open space. So I don't think we have to spend a lot of time on that, if that's the council's preference. I think it's pretty clear. If the council wants or chooses to dispose of it, in what form? That's where we start to get to a more, more level of complexity, more options in front of the council. Do you want to sell it? Do you want to trade it? Do you want to lease it? Is there a combination of those things you want to do with it? Do you, the city council, have a preference for the future development of the North Crestview site? Do you want it to be a park? Do you want it to be housing? Do you want it to be a school? Do you want it to be a way to connect to 280? I don't believe you can choose all of the above, as much as I wish you could. I don't think that's a reality in the universe that we're occupying. Does the council desire to invest in building and operating a park at the Terre-Linda site? As we've outlined, there are options that exist where you can work with the school district on putting a school at, at North Crestview without envisioning building a park at Terre-Linda. And, you know, I think there are good, there are lots of good reasons to build a park at Terre-Linda. There are lots of bad reasons to build a park at Terre-Linda, just like there are lots of good reasons and bad reasons to do this at the North Crestview site. There are site limitations. There's access limitations. Both properties are marginally on the boundary. Both properties are closed to other parks and recreational facilities that already exist. However, that said, both properties are also, you know, amongst the largest acreage currently available in a small community. So those are some of the, so those are some of the questions that we really need to begin to focus in on, so that we can focus our staff resources in working with the council and the school district and the community in terms of moving this issue forward. As you know, the school district has a desire to sort of get this question answered quickly. So in other words, as I've said to the council before, if there's not a desire to see a school at the site, you know, one of the kindest things you can do is tell the school district there's not a desire to have a school at the site, rather than draw this out for six months or a year and then say, there's not a desire to have a school at the site. We think there's a lot of options that are before you this evening. Again, this is typically something that I would be much more comfortable, having had, you know, $100,000 in six months, to fully vet all these options for the council, so that you were getting a really complete package of information before you were being asked to consider this. But we don't live in a perfect world, and the school district has real-world issues that they're trying to address. They had a very interesting idea that's led to a lot of opportunities for the city of San Carlos, that I think we, and I think the council agrees with this, owe it to them and the community to try to have a dialogue and vet those options tonight before we come to some conclusions and begin to move forward. So I'm sure the council has loads of questions. I'll do my best to answer them. The city attorney's here. He can speak to sort of the legal process that's involved here, because there is a whole body of law that discusses what, how do you go about getting rid of a park? You can't just decide to do it. There's some very specific provisions under California law about how you do that. Our city engineer is here as well, as our Parks and Rec director, so, as well as a number of other staff members. So we'll do our best to try to answer as many of your questions as we can tonight. I'll apologize in advance for the questions we can't answer. We'll write them down and put them on the list of already growing questions that we've still been able to, unable to answer at the staff level, and as this process moves forward, we'll answer those. I'm sure this won't be the last time this items before the city council in the next couple of months, so we'll have plenty of opportunities to continue the dialogue and to continue to try to answer questions and provide data. Thank you.
Jeff, are there going to be other staff presentations?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you. Questions for staff?
Cameron.
All right. Thanks very much, Jeff. So I wanted to just talk a little bit about the timing and the process and sort of a potential timeline here. What is our best understanding of the, you know, the school district's preferred timeline? And can you, if this does require a vote of the public, what is a potential timeline for an election? Would it be in November? Would it be done sort of off-cycle with a general California state election? Can you talk a bit about that?
Yeah, and I'm just sort of speculating a little bit in my ability to answer that question. I believe, if I'm not mistaken, I was at the school board meeting, the last one or the one before that, where they talked about this issue. And if I'm not mistaken, and Craig, yeah, Craig's here. You said you were going to, November would be, would be the first election, but you wanted, November's the drop-dead date, and you wanted to get back and have a meeting on it next month, right? At the school district? So I think the school district was hoping to have, you know, indication about where we were going by next month. You know, in other words, if it's a no, it's a no, that's, that's clear. And if it's a maybe or a yes, you know, some, at least some indication on what we thought. And I think probably, at this point, June's not going to work for an election, so it's probably November. You could do it in the fall, but, you know, again, you'd be kind of...
And so, can I just ask, and maybe I can ask Craig too. So when you say November is the drop-dead date, can you expand on that? Why is that the deadline?
Well, first of all, we're investigating if there's a election that really can't be happening. It sounds like we're past the deadline, so we're past the October window, so whatever is possible, first time possible. But for us, it is, our bond dollars, if we're assets of the house, and if we're able to afford to meet the demand, we're expecting a school.
So I'm just going to summarize for the folks watching at home, since they weren't able to hear Dr. Baker's response, that there are some timeline, deadline issues with the school board in terms of how they expend their bond proceeds that were approved by the voters, that they need to meet by next November. And then there are election deadlines in terms of what, you know, how much, how much notice in advance you need to provide voters before you can put something on the ballot in front of them. So I think the school district believes, and we believe, that it's probably a November ballot issue.
Great, thanks. And Mark, I'm not sure how you want to do this in terms of questions. I have other questions. Should I go ahead and ask them, or do you want to bounce around here?
I think I'm going to go out on a limb here and say that everybody's probably got a number of questions, so if you'd like to ask, why don't we each ask like three, I'd say? And then pass the baton and we'll circle around.
Okay, that sounds good. So the second question I wanted to ask, you know, I've received a number of emails from folks who live up in the general vicinity of the North Crestview site concerned about traffic, noise, about a potential school. And you glossed over that a little bit in your presentation. I wonder if you could spend, what's the city's sort of best understanding of, you know, what the impact would really be from a traffic perspective? What would we have to do to find out what that impact would be? What are some potential mitigation mechanisms? If you could just expand a little bit on the direct impact to the neighborhood?
That'll be an easy question for me to answer, because that's going to be definitely one on the list that's on our radar, but we just don't have any answers. You know, we understand that it's, it's a school population of approximately 100, but there are no existing traffic studies that...
I think it's 400, is it?
I'm sorry, 400. That's what was in my mind, but obviously didn't come out of my mouth. The city hasn't conceived of a school being at the North Crestview site before, so in any of the studies we've done on the area for other projects, or this, that, or the other, we've never looked at it. So we, we literally don't have any data today to look at. So I think you could look at some of the other smaller elementary schools to kind of get an idea of what that might look like, but it's certainly something you're going to have to study.
Okay. And just as a quick follow-up to that question, what would it, what would it take to study it, and what would be the timeline to understand that, given the compressed timeline that we just talked about?
Yeah, a traffic study of this nature is typically in the three-to-five-month range. I think you could probably push to get this done closer to three months, and you're probably talking about something on the order of, you know, between $25,000 and $40,000. We'd put out an RFP, and we'd hire a traffic consultant to do this type of study.
Okay. And then, so then, for my third question, so you talked a little bit about, you know, one option is, if hypothetically, if a land swap were to take place, and we took possession of the backside of Terre-Linda, then we could build a park there. Another option potentially is to work with the school district to have a field built on the backside of Terre-Linda, and it would, the ownership would stay with the school. Can you talk about sort of the pluses and minuses of owning a park on the backside of Terre-Linda versus an option where it maintains, the school maintains sort of the integrity of the property, and there's just an additional field there?
Sure.
From the city's perspective?
You know, the park at TL is, is one of the hardest ones to talk about as a staff person, because there are so many possible iterations of what a park could look like on the backside of TL. You know, we, so what we've sort of done is envisioned the maximum version of a park, which means you're going to put in your own access point to it, so that, you know, you're not, this is something we've talked about with the school district. I think initially, they would be open to sort of sharing their driveway, but long-term, it's a problem for the site that's going to have to be solved. You'd have to, you know, purchase a home or two to punch in, you know, your own entry into the park. The primary issues really are, you know, the funds to build the park, and then, of course, the operating O and M capital. And both those things depend on how much park you build. You know, are we just talking about a field? Are we talking about a synthetic turf field? Are we talking about a synthetic turf field with lights? Are we talking about a playground? Are we talking about a gym? Are we talking about a gym and tennis courts? How much recreation programming do you want the city to provide? Do you want it to be more of a passive recreation park? I mean, there's lots and lots of options. We've kind of envisioned the maximum option, full build-out, everything, you know, a, you know, it's, it's not going to be a Burton Park, park ever, but a Burton Park-style park at about $13 million, with an annual operating deficit to the city of probably between $150,000 and $250,000 a year, depending on how much programming the council wants to see happen at that site. There are certain iterations of that, where you could make it much, much less expensive by, you know, working out a long-term deal with the school district on how you access it, so you don't have to acquire property, in terms of not building a gym. The gym would be the single largest expenditure, and different, you know, iterations on what you want to see in the park, and those things could also be staged over time. Did I get them all?
Yeah, that's great. Thanks.
Matt?
Questions I have. Questions I have all relate to items eight, nine, and 10, I believe, that are on your list here, that you went through in your presentation. Primarily, it says that any sale or trade would require voter approval, and... any sale or trade would require voter approval, and I was wondering if that would apply also to a lease option?
Yes, it would.
Okay. And then, number nine says any development other than as a park requires amending the general plan and zoning. Does that also apply if the city were to do an I-280 connection? Let me phrase that a little differently. Would, number 10, which is to do a 280 connection, would that require amending the general plan, and would that also require the vote aspect of it?
I'm gonna just look over to the city attorney for confirmation here. I believe it would on both counts.
Yeah, because it would be discontinued as a park, it would probably require election unless, there's one exception in the, in the government code that talks about a small, taking out of a small portion of the parcel as to a park use, and that's the one exception to the special election. And I can look up the amount of space that is in just a second. I think it was 10% of the land or less than an acre.
Okay, those are my questions. Thanks.
Bob? Relative to the vote that Mr. Johnson and Mr. Grokot brought up, what do you envision, I guess I'm looking at, we're not going to have 10 items on the ballot, you know, vote for one, vote for two, vote for three, one gets the most votes. How do you envision that item being on a ballot?
The law is fairly specific, and again, we can hear from the city attorney on this in more specific detail if you want, if you want to get into that level of detail. But the question before the voters is, do you want to dispose of it as a park? Not what do you want to see it become?
Right, okay.
It's just, do you want it to not be a park?
Okay.
After that, it's within the council's discretion to decide what you want to do with it. So if the voters have to say...
So if the voters say, we want to dispose, we'll let you dispose of it?
Right.
Then it's wide open for whatever the council decides?
That's correct. And presumably, the council may have an idea of what it is they want to do.
Right.
That would be, you know, that you would provide information to folks as part of an informational campaign, which you're allowed to do. But that's not the question before the voters.
Understand. And then if they say, we want it as a park, then that precludes any other use of it?
If you want, if the voters say they want it as a park?
Yeah, the voters say they want it.
Well, the voters would say, if the voters were, if you ask the voters, you know...
That's what I'm trying to get at. Yes or no?
The question is, can we dispose of the park?
Right.
Do you voters want us to dispose of the park? If they say no, then it's a park.
Okay, that's what I'm trying to get at. So everybody understands that it's going to be one item if it goes to the ballot, what it would be.
Yep. You understand correctly.
Okay, I just want to verbalize that. You know, the timing, you know, Mr. Baker or Dr. Baker indicated of November. Well, assume that the electorate said you could dispose, I'm just going to make an assumption. And I'm not saying it's going to happen. I'm just saying, let's say that happened. Okay, that's November 5th, 7th, whatever day it is. Well, we haven't even had any meetings. So we have to meet, and it's not a one-meeting deal. It's a long process. So I don't know quite how that fits in when it says, when it's like a November drop-dead date. There's no way in November that we would ever have any kind of a solution to this issue.
Well, I guess, I guess I would say you'd be challenged to have all the information that you're gonna ultimately need to have before things are going to be built. So in other words, let's say tonight, or in the next couple of meetings, you say, you know, our preference really is to pursue a trade with the school district because we really want to see a park on the backside of TL. You know, you're still going to have to do environmental work, you're still going to have to design the park. All those things are going to happen, but you could still have an election go forward at the same time because you know the question's real simple.
I understand. But what I'm sort of getting at is, you know, you talked about 25,000 to 50,000 or 40,000 for a traffic study. Now you're talking about environmental, you're talking about staff, you're talking about this, that. We could spend hundreds of thousands of dollars, if not even a million dollars, and come up in November and the electorate says, what are you guys smoking? You know, we want a park.
Right.
Okay, so I'm just, I want to make sure everybody understands that if we go in a certain direction, there could be an awful lot of money spent on this, and then it doesn't happen. So it's a difficult issue, is what I'm trying to get at. It's a very difficult issue. It's not a normalized type situation.
It is, and that's, that's one of the complexities that I tried to point out. I think you did a better job than I did in terms of summing it up. You're right. To move quickly, the risk is we're going to have to spend some money with some uncertainty as to what the outcome's going to be, because the outcome's not going to be up to us or the dais specifically. It's up to you to get the ball rolling, but, you know, it's up to these people and all their neighbors
Right.
behind me in terms of whether or not we can proceed with anything other than keep it as a park.
Okay.
Chuck, can I get one more, or is that, do I already have three?
You can do one more.
Thanks. Let's assume that this parcel in North Crestview didn't exist. So the school district wants to build a school. What is our general plan or zoning? Can they build a school anywhere?
You know, I'm gonna maybe look to the city attorney or the community development director, Al Savay. I believe that the school's land use legal framework is very different from what we're used to interacting with the public, in that they're really, their primary land use advisor is the state of California, as opposed to the city of San Carlos. But I'm gonna...
The short answer is that the school district has declared itself exempt from our zoning and could vote to override our general plan by making certain findings. So there is a state law that supports the school district's ability to place schools on land that they deem as appropriate for a school.
So if the school district decides that four acres wherever in this city would be, you know, that's, you know, let's say in the east side somewhere, they could assemble a parcel, some parcels of four acres, and they deem that they could do it, then theoretically they could build a school there?
That's correct.
Okay, I just want to make sure, again, everybody understands the whole process of how this goes.
Without coming before the city council?
Without coming before the city council. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Ron?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a few, when we talk about the city potentially either getting the TL property, or having the school district retain it and then develop it and we maintain it, whose responsibility is it then to build an ingress and egress off of, I guess it would be Dartmouth? Would it be, if we buy it, do we, or if we gain it in a swap, is it then our responsibility to build that road?
I think that's one of the details that would have to be negotiated with the school district. You know, you're getting into a level of specificity that we haven't, you know, we've acknowledged the issue and the school district's acknowledged the issue, so we're aware of it. But we haven't tried to solve for it because that might just be a massive waste of time. You know, but either you would have the school district do it as part of the sale, or you would, you know, offset the appraised value to take into account we were going to have to do that, or you work out some sort of other arrangement.
All right. And unclear is acceptable.
It's definitely an issue that at some point, if you're going to build a park, that back there is likely to need to be addressed. But how, when, who, all subject to additional discussions.
Okay. The other thing you mentioned, it was about, I think you said around a $200,000 annual deficit in terms of maintaining, if we were to choose to develop Terre Linda as a park. How would we, how would we provide the funds? How would the city come up with that, with that money? Could we take it out of general fund? Do we, is there a bond measure? Or not a bond measure, but a tax measure? What, what are options?
Yeah, it's certainly within the, you know, it's a big number relative to our budget, but it's not a huge number. It's not an off-putting number. I think we could certainly find those dollars. Things are pretty good right now from a budget and economic perspective in San Carlos, in this region. Down the road, it may result in, you know, the need to take a look at your Parks and Rec operations and maybe trim some other things out, or cut back in other areas to be able to sustain that level of operation. Certainly, there'll be a downturn in the economy at some point, and things will tighten up again. And this would be, you know, an enhanced operation at that point. So it doesn't concern me so much today, but at the future, in the future, at some point, it will be an issue. It's probably more in terms of, the bigger issue's probably right now more in terms of how much park do you want to build, and depending on how much park do you want to build, you know, we, I think we would pretty quickly get to the point of exceeding our ability to do it, depending on what your timeline is. Now, you could keep the property as is and say, you know, we're going to save our pennies for 10 years and build a park 10 years from now, and hope we're saving enough to come up with the fact it's going to cost a lot more to build in 10 years than it would today. Or you go out and you bond for it, and you, and you put in the facility, and you can, you know, have several competing bond measures, quite frankly, in front of the voters in terms of how much park do they want in the community. You all know, you've all heard the issues discussed many times in this community on what the priorities are. An aquatic center is something I have heard about since just about the day I started here. A community center is something that people also point out. We have an adult community center, we have a youth community center. We don't really have a community center. Just one of the peculiarities of how our facilities developed over the years. The Qantas building originally sort of served that, that purpose, but the city sort of long since grew out of that facility, and we leased it out to another program now at Burton Park. So there's just, you know, there's just a whole host of really positive opportunities that could go in there, but they're really going to require a lot of additional funding and support from voters if you want to go down that road. And again, the more you build, aquatic center's great, but I'm going to have to amend my $250,000 number if we're going to build an aquatic center on the backside of TL because they're very expensive to operate.
One of the emails I got said, gosh, why doesn't the school district just buy that property along Alameda de Las Pogas where Black Mountain Water used to be? And I don't know if this is, might be better, a better question for the school district, but can you tell us what, what, who owns that property? Has it ever been for sale? Have there ever been offers made for it? How big is it? Is it a viable option?
I wish I could, but I can't.
All right.
I mean, I can answer a few of those questions. The Bullock family owns the property. I can't recall it having been specifically on the market. I know it's been talked about by Joe Bullock as part of housing development over the years. The Lowery Ranch property, which is essentially right next door to the Black Mountain property, was, how many acres was that, Al? 12 acres thereabouts? 12 acres? Eight or nine acres and sold for what, 13 or 14 million, wasn't it?
Seven.
Yeah, 13 or 14 million dollars just a year or two ago.
All right.
So that, that gives you some idea of, and it's a very, those properties are very hilly. I know the school district has talked with, at least the Black Mountain properties, property about the possibility. I know another private school had talked with them as well, and they were unable to either reach an agreement on a sale or found the property to have limitations because of the sort of rolling canyon nature of the property.
Right, right. All right. I forget if I exceeded my questions.
You're done.
Bob says I'm done.
Your questions are hard.
You don't get answered.
That's right. The rule is, is two hard questions and one easy question, which I remember. Okay. Okay, thank you for the presentation, Jeff. Actually, and when you said there would be no other staff presentations sort of tying into all the other materials that we had provided to us in the packet, that eliminated a bunch of my questions because, for what it's worth, I found a lot of questionable elements of the analyses. So for me at least, the fact that we're not talking about them tonight, I hope nobody thinks that means I accept them, because I don't, I actually think they're pretty flawed in a lot of ways due to being rushed. One, one very quick, easy question to start with. You talked a little bit about public meetings that we've had about this. I recall there was at least one two-plus-two meeting where we had, and two-plus-two meetings for the sake of the audience are joint meetings of two people from the city council and two people from the school board and associated staff folks, where we talked about different options and stuff. And those are basically public meetings, right? So we...
Yeah, that's correct. You are right. This did come up at two-plus-two meetings, gosh, I'd say probably a year ago or more.
Right.
And it was just more, the discussion at that point with the school district was just more, what's out there? You know, I mean, they were talking to us sort of about all our parks and what the potential was on perimeters of parks and all those kinds of things. You know, for full disclosure, we talked about Burton Park at one point and trying to connect it to Central School, and just a lot of different sort of throw it on the wall and see what sticks type discussions.
Yeah, I actually, not having been on the two-plus-two at that time, I wasn't aware that that was discussed. I was just thinking about some, a meeting we had about four or five months ago where we had that consultant come in and lay out various possible fields and whatnot, depending upon what we did. I just want to make sure people understand that, that there has been some discussion about that. The, actually, these next two questions may be for Greg. But Jeff, you started by talking about the ballot measure, or the item that would go before voters on the ballot, would be a simple yes or no. Do you want to let this land be used for something other than park space? And my question is, when I heard you say that, is can, can the ballot language, Greg, say, do you want to see this kind of use for that land, which is not park use? In other words, can we constrain it and say, we're putting something on the ballot, but we're not sort of saying, give us carte blanche to do whatever we want? There's one choice or two choices?
I'm looking at the actual, the government code sections that talk about...
Try not to go blind while you do that.
Yeah, I know, I know. The, here's, I'm reading from 38, 450 of the government code, and it says, this is the public hearing where the council can override the, any protests that are heard at that meeting. It says, if the protests are overruled, the legislative body may adopt an ordinance calling and fixing the date of a special election to submit to the city electors the question of discontinuance and abandonment of the use of parkland on which the protests were overruled. So I think reading the plain meaning of that is, it's a very simple question that goes on the ballot. I considered this question, actually, because the council may want to in advance specify what they would like to do with the property should the measure pass. And the, the solution that I think would be, the most appropriate would be to pass a companion resolution that is not part of the ballot question, but it's an expression of intent of the council of what you intend to do should the ballot measure pass. So I think that'd be, because of the way the language of the statute is worded, we're constrained, but that doesn't mean that the council couldn't in advance let, let the public know what their plans are through a separate resolution.
The council also has the ability to place an advisory measure alongside it on the ballot, too, does it not?
They actually, that's a good point, Jeff. You could, at this, in the same election, ask the electors a more complicated question, but that's still just advisory. It's not, it wouldn't be binding on the council. But it would be part of that, I think, that process of trying to glean the, what the voters desire.
Yeah, I, okay, well, I appreciate that. When I was listening to you just to read the government code section, and I understand that, that in interpreting the law, you can't look just at the government code, you also have to look at case law and other opinions and whatnot. For what it's worth, for me, that sounded like the minimum of what you must ask. It didn't, I didn't hear something that said you were excluded from sort of having a different, more comprehensive question which also answered that question. So that might be, we don't have to decide that now. That might be something I'd be interested in seeing some more research on.
And I, and just, just so the mayor knows, I did pull the legislative intent on, on the government code, and this law was enacted in 1949 as part of a comprehensive reorganization of state law. There are no cases interpreting the statute. So I would, I could potentially focus on to see if I can find anything further on that, but I was not able to find anything specific on, on this statute. But, you know, we obviously, when we come to that point, if the council decides to do that, we will have some answers for those questions.
That sounds like every lawyer's dream, create new law.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. Last question for now, but also related to ballot measures. We've been talking about what the council can do in terms of putting things on the ballot. I'd like to understand a little bit about what could, for example, the public do in terms of gathering signatures and saying, we're going to put an item on the ballot and, and direct X, direct that the freeway interchange get built, or direct that something else happened. So educate me on that. How's that work?
Well, the, the public using, I think what you're talking about's the initiative process. The public can propose legislative... The public can propose legislation through initiative by presenting to the city clerk a petition, or, excuse me, a notice of intent to circulate a petition. That triggers within 15 days an obligation by the city attorney to create an impartial analysis of such a measure that would be attached to all the petitions that would be collecting the signatures. So it would be visible to anyone signing the petition what the city attorney's impartial analysis was. What they can do in such an initiative is basically amend the city's general plan or amend the zoning code, and what that does, in essence, is lock in those provisions so that only a vote of the voters could change those provisions. So it's a, it's a process in our code that allows the public to propose and enact laws over the city council ability to do so.
Yeah, independent of them, essentially.
Independent, yes.
And so that would allow people to insist that it be preserved as a park, have, insist that development be done, multifamily housing development be done there, what have you?
Right. The public could propose that type of zoning.
Okay. And just very last follow-up on that, and then I'll turn the baton back over to Cameron. Do you recall how many signatures need to be gathered for that?
You know, I, and there's different standards for different sized cities, but I seem to think it was 15% of the people who voted in the last election. I think that's the, the number, but I can get you the precise number later.
Okay. Yeah, I would appreciate, I suspect others may be appreciative knowing that, too. Cameron?
Thanks. One just quick follow-up question to this discussion. So you said that the public can put forth an initiative to change the zoning. Does that include the disposal of parkland?
No, in my opinion, the statute about disposing of parkland, it talks about people, whether the city has designated a park into use in the past and use by public persons. I, you know, this is, I've thought about this and considered this question. I just don't think that the initiative process would override the prior designation of this property as, as parkland. And I do believe 38-440, which is the government code requiring an election to dispose of a park, would still apply because the property has been placed into use by the city.
Therefore, the only way to do something other than what, other than to use this land as a park, is for the city council to initiate an election?
That's my opinion, yes.
Okay. And the initiation of that election, is that a straight majority vote of the council, or is that a four-fifths vote of the council?
The, it's a two-step process. First, there's a resolution that just takes three of the five council members' majority vote to initiate the process, which then requires posting of the park property, publication in a newspaper, and then the setting of a public hearing at the council chambers where protests can be heard by members of the public. If you get even one protest, the council is required by a two-thirds vote, but in our case, that's four of five council members to override the protests and set the matter for a special election.
And what's defined as a protest? Simply somebody coming to speak and saying that they protest the...
That's right, at the public hearing.
So from a practical perspective, it requires a four-fifths vote of the council to initiate the, the election?
That's correct.
Jeff, earlier in the presentation, you said that this land had been envisioned as a school site. I remember you saying that. Now, can you be more specific about that? Is that simply because the land was once owned by the school district? Or was it, was it in fact envisioned to have a school on the property?
You know, honestly, I can't speak to that level of detail in terms of the history of it. It was classified as Site Nine by the school district at one point, which tells me that at some point in time, there was a vision for a school up there. But at some point in time, there was actually a vision for building San Carlos all the way to 280 and even beyond. And obviously, you know, land use changed and the preservation of the 280 corridor occurred, and development was limited at a certain point.
Okay, thanks. Can you talk a little bit about the $18 million offer? What was proposed? And was there any specifics? And what would, you know, what would a housing development look like on that site?
Basically, what was proposed by the developer was what's allowed under the general plan and zoning for the multifamily developments on the neighboring properties, not allowed on this property because it's zoned as a park. So they just, they were looking at basically building exactly what's surrounding it, which I believe would be on four acres, something on the order of approximately 80 townhouses on that site.
Got it.
And again, that, there was, there's not a lot of detail beyond that. So, you know, there could be discussions and setbacks and other issues that would diminish the price, or, you know, if you put it on the market, you may even get a higher price, so.
Great. One other quick question. So the, the potential hypothetical arrangement where the school district would have a school at TL and the city would own a park on the backside, sort of a, essentially a city block, sort of half-owned by the school district, half-owned by the city. Do we have any similar arrangement? Would that be a unique arrangement for the city of San Carlos where we have sort of two public agencies kind of jointly owning a piece of property and operating it?
Two public agencies? Help me out, guys, if you think of anything before I do. I know it's not unique in even San Mateo County.
Yeah.
If nothing, you know, because I know there are certain instances where there are county parks that are but city parks and that kind of thing. I don't think any of our facilities...
Do you know of a school and a park on the same site in the county?
It's the, I guess you could say Burton Park, where we have preschool operating within Burton Park. But I can't think of, I can't think of like a proper school that's operating within a park. I mean, there must be some out there, but I'm not aware.
Perhaps I can answer the question, Councilmember Johnson. There's actually, there's some attorney general opinions that are in my, in my memo that talk about school uses on, on parks, and the, they're generally prohibited, except there's an exception by a 2012 attorney general opinion that talks about where it's not substantially interfering with the use of the parkland as a park. So in the, in the earlier attorney general opinion from 2008, that was the specific question asked, whether a school could lease land from a park, from a city-owned park, and the answer was no. The 2012 talked about shorter-term arrangements that don't substantially interfere with the use of the park, and the attorney general in that more fine-tuned question said, "Yes, they can be allowed, but there is a line where you can't cross."
Yeah. Well, I mean, I think the question is, thank you, the question is less about the leasing, but where you have, you know, two properties where they're essentially, the school district owns one, the, the city owns one, they're contiguous, you're using the same public entrance. And to me, the question is, does that raise any concerns? Is that something that's done frequently, or is that, is that unique? So...
Well, there, one of the, there is a park near San Carlos where there is an access easement across the San Francisco PUC lands at Pogus Ridge. There's actually an easement across other public agency land at that location. It's, I don't know if it's in the question related to the analysis in my memo about access and development costs and the comparison between the two parks, but there's an issue that I've identified there.
Just, just to add, it may be, I don't, I'm not sure enough about the details to be sure, it may be that the situation involving Arundel, the tennis courts, and the rear access to Arguello, which is admittedly not a primary access to Arguello, actually fits that bill as well.
Yeah, no, thank you. You're right.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Matt? Okay? Bob?
If I could just go back to the voter thing for a sec, or the, so let's assume the city council voted to put an item on the ballot, the simple question of, should the city dispose or can the city dispose, wherever the wording is? And there's also a, an initiative that's drawn up by, by citizens, and they put on something saying, "We want it to be housing," or "We want it to be a school," or, there could be two or three items on there. Did you say that basically the, the first item that the city had put on would trump those initiatives?
No, I, what I meant to say was that I don't think that an initiative that changed the zoning to something else...
Right.
Would, would necessarily mean that the city didn't have to comply with 30, the government code to abandon the park. So if an initiative said, "We want housing there..."
Yes.
I still think that we would need to follow the procedures under 38-440 of the government code because it was once dedicated as a park by the city and, and put in use by the city as a park.
Well, again, I apologize, I'm not asking the question very well. I'm trying to put it in layman's terms. There's two items on the ballot. Should we dispose of it? That's the city one theoretically we vote on. An initiative comes and says, "We want to put a school there."
Right.
Who, does it make any difference who gets the most votes, or what happens if they both pass?
If, if they, if they both pass, then the zoning...
Or one doesn't pass. I'm just trying to understand who trumps.
I think I understand your question, Councilmember Grisilli. If the, if the park was decided to be, the voters decided to discontinue the park...
Okay.
And the zoning, and then there was a competing initiative that said, "No, the zoning is going to be, it's still going to be park."
Okay.
I, I think that would preclude us from being able to sell that property to a developer.
Okay, and let's say it said housing.
But a school, if it said housing, then the, it could be housing, but the school district could still override our, our zoning code if we still decided to sell to the school district. They could still build their school because they're not...
I'm still confused. So what's the, why put an initiative on then? But you're, I'm just trying to understand.
Well, it's, well, I mean, that would be...
I apologize, but I'm trying to understand, because I don't get it.
Okay.
I'm trying to figure out, who trumps? Who gets, who's got the juice here?
The...
Because why go through an initiative if it doesn't make any difference?
It, it might not make a difference.
Okay.
It, it might not make a difference if, if the city, after all of that, decided, "We still want to sell it to the school district."
Okay.
The school, school district could still build a school, whatever the zoning was there.
Okay, and let's assume that we wanted to do housing. Does that also eliminate the initiative, then?
The, if, if the, if we, will the initiative, you mean the initiative wants to put housing on there? Or, no?
That's the way you want to slice it. I'm trying to figure out how, who gets...
So let, let me just go through some hypotheticals, and maybe I can answer your question that way.
Maybe it's ABC, I apologize, but, but I'm confused on...
So voters, voter, we, council puts on the ballot the election to discontinue the use of the land as a park.
Right, that's what theoretically would be, okay.
The voters vote in, in favor of that.
Okay.
The property is then treated just like any other piece of property that the city owns, and the city can dispose of it, sell it to a developer, sell it to the school district, exchange it, trade it, lease it. We'd have a lot of flexibility.
No matter what the initiative is?
So competing initiative says, "No, it's, it's only going to be a park," or "It's only going to be a school."
Okay.
That would preclude us from selling it to a developer.
Okay.
But would not preclude us from selling it to a school.
Okay, so it does have some, some power. The initiative does have some power.
Right.
Depending on how it's worded.
That's right.
Okay, I just want to understand it. I apologize, but I didn't get that.
And so, just, just to sum up, all the initiative can do is affect the land use designation of the property.
Okay.
It can't force the city to do something with the property.
Okay.
In other words, you could say, you know, "We've had our election, this, the voters have said it doesn't have to be a park anymore, and there was an initiative saying it's, you know, the voters want it to be a school." The city council could say, still say, "That's all fine, the zoning's changed now to school, and we could dispose of it as a park, but we're going to keep it the way it is." So they're not forcing the change, they're forcing the change in the land use designation. It's just general plan and zoning. It's not the actual action.
That's what I'm trying to get, the city council...
That's what I thought you were trying to get at.
That's what I'm trying to get at. That's what I'm trying to get at. So it just changes the zoning, it doesn't change the decisions.
That's right.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I misunderstood your question. The public, that is not a proper subject for an initiative to direct the city council to take any particular action that is outside of the role of initiative. It would be an illegal attempt. I would be, if that happened, I'd be talking to the council about telling you that it's not illegal.
Okay, so all it can change is the zoning or whatever, but we still have ultimate, the, the five of us theoretically, or the city council, whoever they are, have the ultimate power to do...
You have, you have the power and authority to enter into an agreement to dispose of the property after...
Yeah, I was just trying to speak to your question. It doesn't seem like an initiative goes anywhere.
Actually, well, when it's my turn, we'll talk about that a little bit more.
Just trying to understand.
I was going to say, that, that counts for your next three rounds of questions.
I understand. At least three more, sorry.
No, it's okay. It was good, it was good questions. It was good questions.
I understand it.
Rod?
I only have a couple. Can we go back to the traffic study for a minute? Exactly what would the traffic study encompass? What, what exactly would it look like?
Is that a little detailed? Um, yeah, I mean, that is, that is pretty detailed. I think I'll bring up our city engineer to talk about a typical traffic study. Just to give myself a burger.
Matt Lee, City Engineer. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Member of the Dais. So the traffic study, what it would do, it was, it would project out the traffic impacts based on specific types of developments in the area. So the assumptions would have to be made of what would be developed there. They can obviously take a look at different scenarios, and they can project out into future years. So it would essentially indicate the types of impacts that would have on the road in terms of volume, and the, the impacts at the intersections in terms of their levels of service.
So does it, does it assume that we only use the existing roadways? That we don't make any other changes?
It can make that assumption, but if we know for a fact that we will be adding roadways as part of the development, it can make that assumption, too. As part of the analysis, sometimes if it uses the existing roadway, it can indicate that it's a large enough impact that another roadway or another intersection may need to be created, or a traffic signal would need to be put in a specific area. It can recommend those things as part of looking at the analysis.
Would it, would it study whether or not, say, taking down the barrier between Crestview and Hallmark would be a necessary thing? Would it, would it look at, would it even make that suggestion?
Yes, I could, I could imagine it would at that location based on proximity of the site to the barrier.
All right, and then, following along that thread, then, would it also look at what would happen if you both opened that barrier and created a 280 connection?
Yes, it can do that.
All right, and it would, and it would tell us with, with some reasonable accuracy what we could expect to see in terms of traffic flow?
Yes, it can tell, based on the assumptions that we make, it could tell us with some level of accuracy, based on the projections, what we can anticipate in that location.
And I don't know if this is out of the scope of the traffic study, but would it go so far as to tell us what the impact would be, say, on Edgewood Road or Ralston? Or would that be outside the scope of the traffic study?
It, it can do that, it just depends on the scope of the analysis and how, how wide out we want to, or how deep out we want to go with it. Obviously, the...
I suppose that's a matter of cost as well.
Yes.
Okay.
And so, you know, obviously, the further out you go, the study itself may not be as accurate because it's taking in more and more assumptions into account. The, the more, the more assumptions you have, the possibility of having inaccurate projections.
All right, so you start considering more things, you diminish the potential accuracy of it.
Correct.
Okay, all right. And then the next question, I, I don't know who this is for, but I'll just put it out there. So far, what we're looking at, what, what I've seen emails on, is do we trade the land? Or do we not? And the only possibility for trading the land is so that the school district can put a school on the Crestview, on the North Crestview site. So my question is, and it's probably, I don't know, Mr. Baker, maybe you can answer this. What if the city puts this measure on the ballot and says, you know, "Do we want to change the use of the land?" And the public says, "No." What is Plan B for the school district? What, is there an alternative site? Is there a number two site out there that is sort of next on your list?
You want me to try, and you can correct me if I'm wrong? I believe the two next sites that the school district has been talking about is building their camp, an additional campus on Arundel and/or Heather. Yep?
Or a possibility of staying in Charlotte.
Okay. Or adding more students to TL.
Okay. Or adding more students to TL.
Okay. All right, I think I've run out of questions.
All right. I'll start with a simple question before we dive back into the ballot initiative stuff. The, there's been a number of comments made in the presentation and some of the follow-up questions about access to the facility if we were to do a swap at the back end of TL, and how we might have to have a separate access. I have to, I don't, I need to understand more why that's necessary, because I'm very familiar with the TL campus. I know it certainly, the access road runs along the side of the parking lot there. But, in general terms, the access road into that back area of TL is at least as good as the access into Arguello Park, which has fairly poor access. It has a parking lot, but the access road in and out of Arguello is not what I would call a, you know, really robust kind of thing. So, what's the thinking behind why we think we need, you know, a separate thing there as opposed to just negotiating some kind of long-term deal with the school district?
Yeah, I think, I don't think it has to do with the quality of the road or anything that's in there. I think it has to do with the potential conflicts that could exist between members of the public essentially accessing a city facility through a middle school campus at all times of the school day. And, you know, certainly, I think, you know, that's an issue that potentially has some other ways around it. Perhaps you can engineer a wall or some sort of divider, but I just think, you know, there's certainly liability there from the city's perspective, and I'm sure there's liability there from the school district's perspective to have a facility that's open from sunset to sunrise, which City Park is, where the only way to access it is through a middle school campus.
Just as a follow-up to that, maybe for Mr. Baker, Dr. Baker, do you, and Craig, do you think that there's a way to do this without having to have a separate access portal?
It's possible, you know, that traffic is going so bad, so we have to look at that anyway. But we have that at Rundle right now. We can share a road out, get a parking lot inside, we get to tend towards the egress, so if we'll do it, we have that.
So, one where either by default or whatnot, in some instances, we're sort of working around that anyway today. Okay, enough about that. To go back to the ballot initiative thing for a moment, Greg, when you were describing, I forget who was asking the question, it's probably Bob, when you were describing some of the answers to Bob's question, one of the notes I wrote down when I was, no, it was Cameron actually, sorry. I wrote down something, it sounded to me like you were saying that the council basically had the authority to decide whether or not to put that change in land use designation on the ballot solely to itself, that the people of San Carlos did not have the ability to do that. And I want to make sure I understand that, because my general rule is that all of our powers are derivative from the powers of the people of San Carlos. We act on their behalf, but if we can do something, they can do something. And yet, that seemed to imply that there's things that only we can do.
Well, the, I think the issue was, and the hypothetical was, that I was trying to answer, was, what if a successful initiative changed the designation of the, and general plan designation or zoning or both of that land to something other than park, would we still need to go through the park abandonment process? And my answer was, based upon the language of the statute, it doesn't put a time qualifier on when the park abandonment process would take place. In other words, it doesn't say, "Well, unless the city changes the zoning, and then you don't have to apply to it," or "Unless the, by initiative, the public changes the zoning, and therefore, you don't have to go through the abandonment process." And I base that on a couple of things. One, again, the language of the statute, not putting a time limit on the use of the public of the land as a park. And the second is general state policy about preservation of parks. I wouldn't want to run afoul of those concepts that are embedded in the Attorney General opinions that I've read, the Park Protection Act that I talk about also in my memo, the strong public policy to preserve parks. And I understand exactly what you're saying, and I, if, and I really, I spent a lot of time researching all the questions that might arise, and I have not come to, my conclusion is still that we need to do the abandonment of the park, even if there was a successful initiative to change the zoning.
Okay, thank you. I was actually asking a slightly different question. Let me see if I can simplify it. Accepting the logic that we have to do, that there has to be an abandonment of park status vote, okay, got that. The question is, could, for example, the citizenry of San Carlos say, "We're going to collect signatures, and we're going to put an item on the ballot that says, 'This thing's no longer a park.'" In other words, could a petition, an initiative-based process, trigger that proper exercise of statutory authority?
That could be done.
Okay.
An initiative could propose changing the general plan designation and zoning of that particular site to, from park to something else.
Okay, that's, thank you.
Hang on, just let me follow that up for you. But, can the question, the abandonment question, be put on the ballot by the voters?
The abandonment question could not, because that'd be directing the council to do something.
So, again, they could change the land use.
They could change the land use.
But not put the abandonment process on. That's what I thought I heard you say earlier today.
That's right.
Yeah.
And the reason is that there's a lot of case law that's fairly well-established that the public can't direct the council to do something. And the abandonment process is not the same as the zoning process. So, I guess that's what I would say. And the abandonment, also, the second step to abandonment is the decision, what to do with the property. So, the question of abandonment or discontinuance of park is one question. What to do with it is the second question. That one's clearly outside the scope of an initiative.
Okay. Let's you and I schedule some time to talk about this in more detail offline because I have some pretty serious, either gaps in my knowledge that I want to correct, or some issues that I want to resolve.
Absolutely.
The, but passing on past that, I did understand, I think, the interchange that you had with Bob. The one element that I wanted to check, however, is when you and I have talked about similar situations in the past, when the East Side was talking about taking action if the council did not, if the council ended up doing something that the Greater East Side homeowners associations disliked about the transit village. Initiatives are before the council take action. The voters actually do have the, but the council can take an action, the voters can go out and collect signatures and say, "Stop the music. We, you can't do, we're stopping you," right?
That's right.
That's called a referendum.
That's the referendum, which is a different, that can undo legislative acts that the council has duly adopted. And that, conversely, has been determined to include agreements that the council may have entered into, i.e. development agreements or agreements like that, that have been determined to be referendable, but they're not, but you can't force the council to, so it's the other side of the coin. You can't force the council to enter into an agreement, but you can undo an agreement.
You can, okay, which is the point I was trying to get to. And, not that I'm proposing that we entertain anything like that, but that actually happened, I think, down in Palo Alto recently. That was where they basically overruled the council action.
The Mayville Project.
Yeah, the Mayville Project. That's it for me at this point. Cameron?
I just have one final question. So, I wanted to maybe flesh out a timeline a little bit more now that we've had a bit more discussion. So, school district is saying November. Greg, can you help me understand exactly what the time, how many days things have to happen before, and notice, and so forth and so on? So, if we track back from November?
Right. The ordinance, after the government code procedures where the council would put the matter to the voters, the special election has to happen within a window of 88 days to 114 days.
Okay.
From that decision. So, about three months before November, we'd be looking at sometime in August
Okay.
is when you'd have to enact that ordinance to set the election.
And the opportunity for the public to protest comes after the enactment of the ordinance, or prior to?
Before.
Before?
Before.
Okay, and we have to notice the public, we have to post signs?
It's 20 days, it's 20, the note, the posting, there's the, first, there's the resolution of intention.
Okay.
That triggers the noticing requirement.
Which is how long?
20 days.
20 days.
Okay.
And so, the 20 days of, from that resolution would be the earliest that you could have a public hearing to hear the protest.
Okay, and then, after the protest, you can immediately set the ordinance?
That's right.
So-
At that same meeting, actually.
And then, for us, general, for us generally, to notice a public meeting, so, I guess what I'm looking at here is that effectively, the council would have to take action in May or June?
I think that's probably pretty close. Maybe the, it might be able to do it in the, have that, enact the resolution in July and have a meeting before the August deadline. But, there's a, you know, there aren't any meetings scheduled during that timeframe, but yes, you could.
Okay, and then, so, okay, so we're looking at a couple months. And then, Jeff, I just wanted to ask, can you just give your sense of sort of staff time and feasibility to put something together like this, if indeed, we needed to take, you know, council action in, let's say, by early July at the latest?
In terms of, you're talking specifically about-
I just want to talk about, is this a feasible thing to do, and how expedited, you know, from a drop everything perspective, are we doing to make this happen if indeed we needed to meet the school district's deadline of getting it on the ballot in November?
Well, there certainly would be work involved. I would assume, I mean, this is obviously a very big issue, you know, relative to the community. So, we would want to spend all the time and effort on it that it deserved if the council wants us to go down the road. So, we might have to change some priorities. I don't think just preparing for the issue of the ballot and this question of disposing of a park is going to be particularly cumbersome for the staff in terms of staff time. In fact, I, you know, I'd kind of defer a little bit to the city attorney, because I think he's going to be spending probably the most staff time on this specific issue. You know, in terms of, you know, environmental issues and park design, or housing design, or all those kinds of things that could come down the road as a next stage, that's where there's going to be a lot of my staff's time.
Okay, all right, thank you.
All right, any other questions? I had one last quick one based on Cameron's question there, which is actually for Dr. Baker. We've talked about, hey, don't roll your eyes at me. Just kidding. Craig and I go way back, by the way, folks, that's why I'm just teasing it. The deadline of November that was being discussed, I just want to be clear, is it a hard and fast, drop-dead thing, or is it one of these things where if the city and the council was, had made the decision, "We want to move forward and evaluate this," we're not, we haven't just made the decision about whether we're actually going to pull the trigger on it out, but we're going to move forward and evaluate it seriously, but we need some more time? I mean, is that, is it like, nope, it's got to be November or nothing else?
I don't think I can answer that without a board discussion. Because what happens is you just pay out, if you miss a year because of the school year, it's a whole another year before you, if you're building.
Fair enough.
That's our issue, that if we're going to stay on target, you know, the house is not have to be portable all over, the house is, that's why I can't answer that out. But certainly, the board would be open to discussing whether it were, almost, they're all part of it, that they have to-
To paraphrase for the home audience who may not have heard that answer, basically, what Dr. Baker was saying is that he can't really answer the question without a full discussion of his board, because there are some sensitivities in terms of when construction can take place outside of the school year, where little delays can have big impacts. I will just leave it with you that that may be something, given the tone of some of the questions being asked there, that might be something that you guys ought to think about, ought to have a discussion of. All right, so, we are finally going to get to the moment that everybody has been coming here waiting for, which is public comment. I just have a couple of housekeeping notes, which I normally do at the beginning of a meeting, but since we only had one topic in this meeting, I'm holding off till now to do this. We're going to call people up in order. By the way, I tend to try and use people's first names when I address them. If that's of concern to anybody, please correct me, and I will use whatever title or description you think is appropriate, or you want me to use. We are going to start by having some public comment from individuals who are representing groups or organizations. And we will probably grant them a little bit more time, on the order of about four or five minutes, to address the council, although we ask them not to take the entire time if they don't need it, because there's a lot of people who want to talk. When we get to general public comment, what we're going to do is give everybody two minutes. We ask you to be respectful of the time, just because there are a lot of people who want to talk. We sometimes have issues with the council, because people spend a lot of time and effort putting their comments together, and they want to go through the whole thing. And it takes longer than two minutes to go through it. I actually don't like having to verbally interrupt people to say, "Hey, you're out of time." So, what I'm going to try as an experiment this time is the card system. So, I'll raise a yellow card, it's supposed to be yellow. When there's about 20 seconds left of the time, just so you can sort of see that hopefully, and start wrapping up, when you get to the end of the time, I'll use the old red card. And, again, we just ask that you be considerate of each other, basically, so that we can get as many people in here tonight to talk to the council as we can. So, with that, my thought was, I was thinking about the groups that might be here. I mentioned homeowners association. Do we have somebody from, or perhaps a couple of people from the homeowners association who want to address the council? Okay, if somebody shows up, we'll certainly accord them the privilege that I was talking about a minute ago. The, I know there's somebody here from the district, from the Board of Trustees. There's somebody here from CLC, I saw them as well. Are there anybody from the sports groups or PTAs? Sports groups. And somebody else is raising their hand.
Representing all the sports groups, not just the person.
Yes, correct, correct. And PTA, okay. And again, as Bob was just pointing out, if you're talking for yourself, please wait till we go through everything. If you're talking on behalf of your group, that's who we're trying to get now. So, with that, I think I'd like to start with the sports groups. So, and since I'm doing this out of order, I don't have your name, but if you, when you come up to the microphone, if you can announce yourself, we would appreciate it.
I put a card in for the PTA and AYSO.
That's fine.
Coming up with AYSO. My name's Rachel Cotton, I'm a parent in the school district. I've held several PTA positions over the last eight years, and I'm currently serving at the PTA president at Rundle, sorry.
We can't even hear you.
Okay, do you want me to repeat that? Sorry.
Yeah, please, could you?
I'm a parent in the district. I've been, held various PTA positions for the last eight years, and I'm currently the PTA president at Rundle.
I am Jim Ritchie, I'm the regional commissioner for AYSO. I've been on the board for 10 years, and I've been, I've lived in the community for over 25 years.
Okay. PTA represents all of the children who attend our school located here in San Carlos, and AYSO provides recreational soccer to over 1,500 kids in San Carlos. Our city's a great place to live with great schools and engaged community, and we strongly support the land swap.
We know and appreciate how precious land is in San Carlos as a community- As a community, we value schools, our parks, and as our population increases, not to mention the school age population, you know, we need to think long-term about providing more property for schools, for fields, for children and for, for our adults. On behalf of the organizations that Rachel and I represent, as well as the many sports group, sports groups who serve over three thousand kids, over fifteen hundred adult volunteers, we're very pleased to present a petition that we've gathered signatures on, of over twelve hundred signatures. This is in favor of the proposed land swap and we've done this in the last two weeks. We feel like that represents a significant commitment to the land swap and it demonstrates, you know, organization and, and our interest in furthering schools and fields in the community.
We all understand that the city and the district do different things for us as a community, but we hope that you'll look past your specific responsibilities and look at what's best for the overall community.
So keeping our schools from getting too large, getting a chance to get badly needed field space, I know the city had talked, or they were talking about a need to as much as double the field space and we feel that, we feel that every day. And balancing out traffic are priorities. You know, choices unnecessarily crowded schools, unnecessarily worsened traffic and a loss of field space. And, and so to us, the choice seems very clear and, and we ask that you do everything in your power to, to make the swap happen and we appreciate your help.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. Let's see. Do we have, is there a representative from the district? Adam.
Interesting to be on the other side of the dais here.
Yes. Welcome, President Rack.
Thank you. My name is Adam Rack. I'm the president, current president of the San Carlos School Board. On behalf of the district and the board, Mayor Ober, members of the city council, Jeff and Greg and others, thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. We're at an important time in the school district. Our student population keeps growing and thanks to the, the community and the voters, we were fortunate to pass a bond in two thousand and twelve to build classrooms in capacity to meet that growing population. In fact, that effort is already underway. Just this week, we completed the EIR process and hope to start construction at Central Middle School this summer. Our facilities master plan calls for the relocation of Charter Learning Center off of the, move them off the TL campus to make room for a fourth and fifth grade school there. To accomplish this, the district has spent well over a year looking for property to house the San Carlos Charter Learning Center. After significant searching, research, discussion with the cities, the board determined that the best current option available is to propose a land swap with the city for the property on Crestview in exchange for land on the upper TL campus. I appreciate the city's taking up the discussion today. Thank you. And I look forward to working with all of you to hopefully find a solution that will benefit not only our school children, but the community at large. The district has been and continues to be a good partner with the city. We've been working together for decades to do what is best for the community. The district currently hosts a range of recreational programs for children and adults. We allow field usage at Heather, on the Heather Dog Park and allow usage there, a Rundle tennis court, as we mentioned earlier, in the city, and the district has been supportive of your efforts around Wheeler Plaza. I believe the alternatives and other options are a net loss for the community. Without a land swap like this, the district will end up building on existing school property, which will remove play space and exacerbate traffic. We each have valuable land that is not being used and that can be turned into the benefit for the community. A school to house the Charter Learning Center can allow the district to move forward with its facilities master plan and meet its goal of continuing to provide a high-quality education for its children. In addition to much-needed field space for the community, further this swap can help stave off growing traffic congestion in the city. This can be a win for San Carlos and one that I hope you will support. On behalf of the district, I ask you tonight not to consider whether to make this partnership happen, but rather, how will we make this happen? Because it is in the best interest of our community. And if for some reason you do not see this as beneficial to the community, please help us understand why you see it this way. Thank you again for taking up this matter. I look forward to working with you to find a solution to this challenge and to seize this opportunity to benefit the entire community.
Thank you, Adam. Next, I was going to see if there's a representative from Charter Learning Center? Or two representatives, perhaps?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members.
If I could ask you to identify yourselves, just, thank you.
I do my thank yous first.
Oh, sorry.
My name's Stacy Emery. I'm the director of the San Carlos Charter Learning Center and I also am a founding educator at that school. I also am a parent of two children who have graduated from that school, twenty-one and sixteen years old. I'm a resident of San Carlos, not currently, but I went to school at Britton Acres, at Tierra Linda, and I'm a graduate of San Carlos High School. Yeah. Go Dons. Anyway, I wanted to, I appreciate the opportunity to come here tonight and give you a little bit more information, a little bit more visibility into who the San Carlos Charter Learning Center is and what it is we do here in, in this community. We are getting ready to celebrate our twentieth anniversary. We were granted a charter, charter number oh 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 one in February of nineteen ninety-three and we opened our doors in August of nineteen ninety-four with eighty-five learners. The school was created by a very dedicated group of San Carlos community members, including Don Chalbi, Beth Hunkapiller, Linda Tuchel, Carolyn Norman Whiteley, let's see, Jean Ongston Supergato, and many, many more, and several educators in the community. We've gone from a very small startup school to one of the strongest charter schools in the state of California. We've been featured in TV and news articles. I brought one as a party favor. This is the most recent one we have. And we have been visited by national, international folks who want to learn more about what we do. Probably the most exciting one or most memorable was a visit from President Clinton back in nineteen ninety-seven. I'll tell you something about the Secret Service agents. It was really exciting. So we're proud of this recognition. It's something I'm personally proud of as a founding educator at the school. But really what's at our heart is our program and our learners and our families. And so I really wanted to spend more time talking about that. From the beginning, we have always had a very strong commitment to community building. This is fostered by our K-8 program. We're the only K-8 school in the San Carlos School District. We have multi-age classrooms. We have a collaborative environment both for our learners and for, for our educators. And we have an emphasis on meaningful parental involvement. These are, these are all cornerstones to our program. And while we are proud to be one of the schools in the San Carlos District, we operate independently. And our small size and our flexibility allows us to try new things and really incorporate programmatic elements that are really specific to our mission. For example, social emotional learning is integrated throughout of our curriculum. We teach children how to work cooperatively, to build and maintain relationships, to navigate conflicts, and to make responsible decisions. We're a progressive school at, at our heart and really that the keystone to that is, is to educate learners to be concerned citizens, both for themselves, for others, and for the community. And this, this commitment that we have to this really has a deep effect on the culture of our campus. And I, I highlight this in particular because I feel like that our commitment to community building would be evident if we had the opportunity to relocate on the Crestview site. We understand at least some of the apprehension and the potential impacts introducing a school to this environment will have to the neighborhood, traffic noise, and I'm sure there's a myriad of other concerns that, that the Crestview neighbors would have. We may not have the answers yet. We don't, because we don't know all, all the concerns. We're committed to working with the stakeholders, especially those neighbors in the Crestview area, to create a school that doesn't change the quality of the neighborhood. We have a long history of innovation and collaboration and problem solving and we would definitely apply these and so we would be a positive addition to the neighborhood. So, thank you.
Mr. Mayor and members of the city council, thank you also for the opportunity to address you this evening. My name is Matt Coett and I'm the current chairman of the board of directors of San Carlos Charter Learning Center for CLC. I'm also a sixteen-year resident of San Carlos. I'm speaking this evening on behalf of the CLC board of directors, which voted unanimously on April ninth to endorse and support the San Carlos School District's proposed land swap. As a public charter school, CLC operates with autonomy, but depends on the district for oversight and for facilities. And as such, it's the district's role to provide a campus for CLC as it does for all the other public schools in San Carlos. CLC has enjoyed a close working relationship with the district as we've grappled together on how best to accommodate the growing school age population in town and it's that collaboration that has brought us here tonight. CLC is an essential part of the public school fabric in San Carlos and housing CLC is a linchpin for the district's facility master plan. Our current enrollment of three hundred and forty-six students, growing towards four hundred, is drawn from across the city and it eases capacity pressures on all of the other campuses in the district. We are unique in that there is no, there is no neighborhood attendance area tied to our school. We are the only campus that can be relocated without cascading effects on attendance, attendance boundaries across San Carlos. CLC supports the land swap because we believe this is the best solution for the whole city as well as for the district and the charter school. All other options require an existing school campus to be divided and shared, impacting facilities and educational programs and further concentrating traffic congestion. For CLC, having a separate campus allows our educators and administrators to plan and implement programs and schedules unfettered by the compromises necessary in a shared facility. The time to act is now. The students are already here and construction cannot wait. We urge the council to seize this opportunity for good stewardship of our community's resources. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt and Stacy. Has anybody from the homeowners association, speaking for the group, shown up since we started? Okay. I think that takes care of, because we did PTAs, we did the district, we did CLC, we did sports groups. So we will start going into the individual public comments. Again, these are two minutes. So I will call up each person one by one and I'll announce the next person in sequence just so you can get ready. First person is Paul Max Peyton, followed by Charles, I apologize for messing up anybody's names, Sisman.
I reside at Three Azalea Lane. North Crestview Park is literally my front yard. It is metaphorically symbolic that today, Earth Day, twenty fourteen, we would be thus enjoined. Forty years ago, a group of individuals every bit as intelligent and passionate as we are was entangled in a similar debate. Their decision gave birth to North Crestview's purpose and usage. We must not lose sight of this. North Crestview is reckoned and henceforth regarded as a de facto park. It fairly teams with life. Walking my cats, I have seen deer, jackrabbits, gophers, garter snakes, and field mice. Places for harboring wildlife are becoming all too precious in our increasingly urban city. This year, San Carlos Citizen Survey states, ninety-eight percent of respondents shared favorable opinions of the quality of life in San Carlos. Will a comparable percentage of the flora and fauna also agree? As resource custodians, it is incumbent upon us to preserve qualities of the city that support the well-being of all life forms within our borders. Wildlife does not vote, yet it outnumbers us and was here long before we were. To those who ask, what are the children? I say, what will they inherit forty years hence? Nature is our enduring bequest. My words are but a voice in the fugue, their purpose to sing a small part of the civic choir with clarity of purpose so that it might resonate. Let us recommit ourselves, this Earth Day, to a holistic vision of San Carlos and craft a fitting present for our collective future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Peyton. Before Charles starts, there was one thing I omitted from my description before. We ask that the audience not clap or applaud or boo or, or anything like that. This is an important time because we want to hear from you, but we also want everybody to be respectful of different opinions. So please refrain from doing so. Do it internally. That's, that's always a good thing to do. Charles, you're up, followed by John Takara.
Mr. Mayor, distinguished members of the city council. I apologize for my accent and I want to be sure that you understand what I have to say. Please ask me anytime if you don't understand something. My name is Charles Chichman. I live at Two Marygold Lane, right across this land you are discussing tonight. I have a ten-by-thirty-foot balcony facing this land. My bedroom, my dining room windows looking at this land, my living room windows and the sliding door to the patio is opening up in this direction. My master bedroom windows upstairs and the master bathroom looking at this land. So I think I am one of, one, there are more, I'm the one of the most exposed person who owns a piece of property which the proposal, each one of them except one, will destroy our life, will destroy our property values, and will destroy the whole neighborhood. I don't want to spend time on my own case, but I would like to raise at least three questions within these two minutes, which I think it's, it would interest all of us. One question I have to everybody here, who paid for this land, for this Crestview Park? Gentlemen, the city doesn't have a dime in this land. This was given to the city. This was given to the city by the subdivision who created these subdivisions, subdivisions. So we have a vested interest in this property and I hope the city is not going to confiscate it from us. The second issue is that, you know, you are talking about eighty units, the report, excuse me, eighty units development on this site. If you, and it is a comparable development, what is there on both sides? Now, I recall that the average lot size is about two thousand square feet and the surrounding subdivisions. Now if you place all of these lots next to each other, that will cover the whole area. I hope the city council will leave this place as it is. Like when I checked on the status of this land before I bought my unit fifteen years ago, I was told the city hall, it is open space. Please look at the city attorney's report on page three, he says exactly the same. Thank you for your patience. Thank you for the thirty seconds. I, over.
That, that's okay. It was actually a minute, but don't worry about it. Okay. So John Takara, followed by Bob Black.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is John Takara. I live on Azalea Lane. As one of the first speakers tonight who opposes the land swap, I just wanted to say from the start that I, and I think I can speak for everybody in the Crestview neighborhood, am not anti-school at all. In fact, in my, in my case, I volunteered to help with science field trips for students who attend local grade schools and high schools. My concerns about the proposed land swap deal are based on an intimate knowledge of the, of the Crestview site. I have lived immediately adjacent to it for the past six years and know that property very well. What I'd like everyone here to know, both on the panel and in the audience, is that that site is not flat in, by any means. The actual land area that's available to build on is not four acres, but is only about three acres. So if a school was built on that site, and also taking into account the common areas that the school would have, the necessary parking and the other uses of the land such as the setbacks that would be needed on the north and south edges of the property, let alone an I-280 off-ramp. In, excuse me just for a second here, at best, you would have room for only one playing field and that playing field would probably not be full-sized. Now, as opposed to that, a wonderful feature of this site are the spectacular views that it affords of the bay on one side and the open space preserve on its west side. So taking those two aspects of the property together, the uneven topography- So taking those two aspects of the property together, the uneven topography and the spectacular views, I think that rather than building a school on the Crestview site, a much better use for this land is to leave it as a park, and perhaps build several full-sized playing fields on it, that are much more, much better suited for activity as such as soccer league play. I encourage any families in New Orleans who have children in sports leagues now or will in the future, to come up and see the site. And when you're up there, try and imagine how nice it would be for your children to play those games in a beautiful environment, rather than wasting that opportunity by having them instead spend much of their day sitting in a classroom. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Bob Black, followed by Sally Samuels.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council. I'm Bob Black, longtime resident, maybe one of the few people here who was at some of the public hearings that, where this development was approved. Lands of Roth, now known as Highland Park, is a parcel of little more than a hundred acres that was subdivided many years ago with little regard to the topography. The entire property was subdivided, including the steep hillside slopes on the east. There was no practical way to develop the property as subdivided. Lincoln Properties proposed to develop the property as a planned community development and under PC. Under PC, Lincoln Properties took the total number of housing units that would be allowable under the original subdivision, and clustered them at the western and less steep parts of the Lands of Roth. By dense clustering of the housing units, Lincoln Properties left the eastern slopes as permanent open space, and also left the space now called Vista Park, and the four-acre parcel named Park, Euclid, North Crestview Park Site, as permanent open space, without changing the overall housing density on the property. The Lands of Roth are now fully developed. No additional development, including a school, is possible on this property without violating the enabling planned community ordinance, and thus changing the zoning. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Sally Samuels, followed by Don Morelli.
Mr. Mayor and council members, I'm Sally Samuels. I live at 20 Calypso Lane. I initially wasn't going to speak tonight, so what I'm speaking is from my heart, how I feel about living in San Carlos. And I have nothing against children. I taught kindergarten for 39 years. I love kids. But when, and I lived in San Francisco for 55 years. I chose to move out of the city. I picked San Carlos. I picked an area that, to me, was like moving to heaven. That's what I called it when I moved up there, that I'd moved up to heaven. The landscape, the view, the tranquility, this was very important to me. And had I wanted to live by a school, I would have moved by a school. I understand the need for a school, but I don't think that this is the proper location for it. And I think that the majority of us that live up there, we don't have school-aged children. I'm not saying everyone, but a great portion of us, especially in the townhouses. And I just don't feel it's proper to build one there. It would ruin the community that we have up there. And thank you.
Thank you, Sally. Don Morelli, followed by Alessandra Zinko.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Thank you very much, and members of the council. Thank you for having this meeting, and for allowing me to speak. My name is Don Morelli. I live at 3 Calypso Lane, and my wife and I have been there since 1989, which has been a good long time, and I mean that emphatically, a good long time. I had a couple of things I was going to say, but just the discussion and some of the things that triggered off this whole evening has put me into a slightly different vein here, not least of which was Mr. Maltby's first line of the quote from Theodore Roosevelt about doing the right thing. And one of the things that I do in my business as a consultant is dealing with companies that have complex problems. And as the discussion has evolved here, it's obviously come to the fore that this is indeed a very complex problem. And I always try to look at, have clients and other people look at complex problems from a systems perspective, a systems management, systems engineering perspective. And in that regard, it's not just recognizing that there are trade-offs, because we all know that life is never a series of trade-offs, but it's how these different factors interact with each other. So it's not just a trade-off of traffic versus we need better school facilities. Yes, we need to be able to deal with both, but there can be unintended consequences if we don't look at them in the right viewpoint. To point, recently, one of the units on our street just sold in the last 10 days. It was listed for 9% under the comparables in the area. That's worrisome. Because if I understand it properly, from what I've gleaned off the internet, a good deal of funding for schools comes from property tax, depending on where you look at the internet. It's every, in California, it's anywhere from about 21% to 45%. If this impact in our area indeed has a negative impact on property values, that will impact negatively tax revenue. So we can do one thing that we think is very positive and have a negative effect on the other side. If we don't look at the interaction, we may be making a very, very bad decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Don. Alessandra Zinko, followed by William Nieto.
Good evening, council members. Thank you for letting me speak. I live in San Carlos, lived here since 1998, and I oppose the land swap because I think it's a bad deal for the city. One of the benefits that both the mayor and the school district have been touting is that if we swap Crestview for Terra Linda, it's going to increase the amount of available athletic playing fields for everyone. But what they don't address is how we're going to pay for it, with, as I thought, until Mr. Maltby got up, that your unfunded capital project budget was only 80 million, but now today I find out it's over $225 million, many of which of those products are, in fact, the refurbishment and enhancement of existing parks and playing fields. So the question is, sir, if you trade Terra Linda for, to use as a park, how are you going to pay for it? You don't answer that question, and so you are misleading people to think that they're going to get playing fields in exchange for Crestview, when you're not going to be able to do anything with the land. The city has received an unsolicited bid for the land for $18 million. And even though the offer has expired, it seems to be a more appropriate benchmark for the value, or the true value of the Crestview site than the Terra Linda, or the current appraisals that you have, especially considering that those appraisals are almost a year old. And given today's increase in property values, I think one should consider those appraisals So the question is, if you did the land swap, what would you do with Terra Linda? If you don't have the money, it's going to sit there. And if it sits there, presumably, it will be, continue to be used as it is today. So what in exchange have we gotten for the Crestview property then, if that's the case? We will have given up one of the most valuable pieces of property in the city for no park, no playing fields, and no money. So if, the point of, the point I'm trying to make is, if you want this to be a school, then sell the land to the school district, make them pay what is the true fair market value of the property, use the 18-plus million dollars that you could get for the rest of the unfunded budget items that you have failed to deliver on. So thank you.
Thank you. William Nieto, followed by Sampa Banerji.
Mr. Mayor, councilman. My wife and I have lived in a townhouse off Crestview Drive for over 15 years. The first Halloween, we were at our new home, not one trick-or-treater came to our door. The next year again, not one child. In fact, we have never seen a trick-or-treater in the area, because we've learned there are few children in the neighborhood. Young couples come in, they get pregnant, and when the children are still toddlers, they move out. The hundreds of units in the area are not child-friendly. Parents have the choice of letting their children play on the street in front of their units, or on a small concrete patio. As a consequence, there are almost no school-aged children in the area where the school board proposes to build this school. Transporting children from where they live to the highest and furthest point in the city is a terrible idea. Driving to the top of Crestview is not like driving across town. That hill kills gas mileage. With an initial enrollment of 400 students and 25 staff, that could mean 150,000 trips a year up narrow, winding roads. Three reasons not to build a school at the top of Crestview Drive. One, to avoid heavy traffic caused by moving children from where they live to the furthest point in the city. Two, to avoid the cost in fuel and time you would force parents to spend in traffic jams on steep, windy roads. And three, to avoid the cost to the environment from the pollution of 150,000 cars a year climbing that hill. Thank you.
Thank you, William. Sampa Banerji, followed by Barry Dent.
I did not come with a prepared speech, so I'll speak from my heart. I moved to this country 25 years ago, and to San Carlos in 2001, and made it my home. I love this place. It's a beautiful city. And I want to say, I'm an ex-academic. I love children, and I used to teach them, and I still continue to go and volunteer in schools. I think Sandy here, who spoke a little while ago, I think it is a very bad deal for the city. And the reason it's a bad deal is financially, at least from what I've seen, it does not make sense. We are losing money. Number two, I'm honestly scared to see children in that land. It's dangerous. I would not have my child go and play there, or be in a school there. It's just not well-guarded. And number three, I'm concerned about the ecology. I'm concerned about the wildlife that we have. What's going to happen to that? So I would request you guys to take these into consideration, and not build a school in that vacant lot.
Thank you. Barry Dent, followed by Liz Sekler.
My name is Barry Dent, and I live on Trillium Lane, which is basically the intersection of Club and Crestview. So you can imagine my concern with the traffic, I'm even getting out of my driveway. But the issue that I'd like to talk to tonight is a concern that was not brought up in any of the presentations that would affect almost all of them. And that's the issue of the status of the property. We all know that it was previously a military base. And recently, two weeks ago, the Army Corps of Engineers representative showed up to survey that land, and discuss with the Crestview neighbors, the recollection that they have on what was where and when. The concern that the inspector had was the status of the buried fuel tanks, of which he indicated there were five. Doesn't know if they're still there, whether they've contaminated the ground, or what. And the status of the land and the ground is unknown as well. So in order for us to do anything with this property, that issue needs to be addressed. Thank you.
Thank you, Barry. Liz Sekler, followed by John Lillygren.
Mayor, council members, my name is Liz Sekler. I live on Calypso. I've been in San Carlos since 1984. Clearly, the City Council and San Carlos School District have been considering the North Crestview property for space requirements for a while. We in the surrounding area, however, are only recently learning about this, and the potential for the land use change. Most of us don't have children, as Bill said, and many of us live in two-bedroom units, where children really don't fit very well. I acknowledge the growth of school population in San Carlos and the growing need for field space. However, to utilize a property of such incredible value with respect to unobstructed views is trading top-notch property to use, for a use which is, it's not best suited. As it's currently zoned, that property is a park. It's not listed as a park in the San Carlos directory, nor is there a sign on the property stating park name, hours, et cetera. Until recently, I, as a local resident, didn't even know it was legal to walk there. So it's underutilized, we know. Given that park use, we learned tonight, can include field usage, any rezoning to, say, abandon it, if that were not to pass, my understanding is it could still be used to build fields. And I'm getting nods. So my first choice would be option one from your list, which is no change. It's zoned as a park presently. You could consider building it for a field use, without changing any other school initiative. Number two, my option preference would be to sell it for additional townhome development, which I believe is your option six or seven, put it up for the best bidder. An unsolicited bid is never your highest bid. Option two, on your list, retain the current property and prove it as a park, along with option one, again, is my preference. You could build a field there. You could even consider Crestview Park down the hill as an alternative location, include that in the trade, if you would, and make other properties available for consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Liz. John Lillygren, followed by Dr. Charlene Edinburgh.
Hello. I live on Crestview Drive and Crestview Lane, right near the property. I am opposed to the land swap. I'm not opposed to the, to children, or to the schools of San Carlos. I'm a new resident, but I moved here with my wife because we love the area. And I do support the, keeping the property as a park, or possibly improving it and making fields. But at this point, I do not approve the land swap. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Dr. Charlene Edinburgh, followed by Stacy, oh, Stacy Emery has already spoken, but Tom Hausken.
Good evening. I'm Charlene Edinburgh, and I live on Pixie Lane, which is part of the Crestview Estates complex. I'm a native of San Carlos. I've lived on San Carlos Avenue near Tial for over 30 years. Now I live up the hill. So I'm very familiar with the traffic on San Carlos Avenue. I'm also very familiar with what it takes to get up to Crestview Park. And I have indicated in correspondence with the City Council members and school board that there are significant traffic implications to adding more traffic than there already is. Frequently, it's single lane on most of the roads getting up there. So as part of the traffic study, I would like to encourage whoever does that to also undertake a walking study. Some people have proposed that children would be able to walk up and down the hill. And people are laughing, because there are no sidewalks on several of the streets leading up the hill, and that's extremely dangerous. So another thing that was left off of the presentation is any indication of difference in elevation between the TL site and the Crestview Park site. Your ears will pop going up the hill. There's a significant grade from this lower part of San Carlos to the top of the hill. And having kids walk up and down there twice a day, in the rain, whatever, is going to be unlikely. So that's just, from my heart, as some people have said, I absolutely suggest that you keep this area as a park at this time, and not undertake putting a school there at the top of the world. Thank you.
Thank you, Charlene. As I mentioned, Stacy Emery has already spoken, so Tom Hausken, followed by Kevin Statenfield.
Thank you, council members. My name is Tom Hausken. We live in San Carlos, we live on Connalita Drive. We moved here in 1999. We've been here 15 years. We moved here in 1999, we've been here 15 years. We have two kids, they're no longer in, they're in high school, and no longer in any of the schools that would be impacted by this move. I've heard a lot of reasonable things said here, and there's a lot of reasonable options, a lot more than I had realized, and some I think are more reasonable than others. And some of the comments are very interesting. I'd like to say, and this is kind of a lonely position here, I'd like to say that I think the land swap is also reasonable. It's not unreasonable. There's not a lot of options to choose from, and there's a lot of good ones, but it is also a reasonable option. But I'd also like to bring up the traffic study, and maybe this is directed more towards the city engineer. So I live on Carmelita, there's a lot of riots through traffic in the mornings. This was brought up to the City Council a few years ago, nothing was done about it at the time. Since then, one of the residents was killed walking across Alameda, in an unrelated incident. Nothing was done about it on Carmelita still. More recently, one of the residents took a photo of a high school kid that was driving through, we know they're high school kids, adults, all types, driving through to Carmelita. The police did follow up with it, and he was disappointed. And the police have agreed recently to do, take some measures on the street, to try to see what they can do. It's not the traffic itself that bothers me, it's the unsafe speeds that drive through there. And I'm not sure that moving 400 students from the T L campus up to Crestview would necessarily change that that much. And I'm not sure that it would impact Crestview that much either. But adding more students down below, whether it's at Arundel, or T L, or possibly Heather, would certainly have impacts. The way congestion works is, you can absorb so much, and then it's nonlinear. Then that's when you get the bumper-to-bumper traffic, and the long wait times at airports, and stuff like that. It's when you get to that point, then the congestion goes way up. So it's safety, and I hope that the city engineer, if the traffic study is done, I hope that they consider the other choke points in the city, and what it does to that, not to do the land swap. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Kevin Statenfield, followed by Tom Morse.
Kevin, Mr. Mayor and City Council, thank you for the opportunity to talk. My name is Kevin Statenfield, my family, we have lived in San Carlos for 15 years. We have two boys, an 11-year-old and a nine-year-old, who attend Charter Learning Center, and participate in many sports and outdoor activities. I'm here to voice my support for the proposed Crestview land swap proposal, because we feel it helps maintain strong schools by minimizing site overcrowding, it better spreads the school commute traffic throughout the city to minimize traffic jams, and provides an option to increase the amount of field and park space. We feel this is the best of the options that have been proposed by the school district. I mean, the bottom line is that, they're proposing that the CLC school needs to move somewhere, and they've come up with four possibilities, the land swap, staying at T L, moving to Arundel, or moving to Heather. All those sites are very, already have a lot of traffic, and are overcrowded. So, as part of any traffic study, I think the city does, if they move 400 students up to Crestview, I think they ought to look specifically at the alternatives of, what if they move 400 students to Heather, what if they move 400 students to Arundel, or what if 400 more students are moved to T L, and see from a traffic point of view, which is the worst of the scenarios. Others have already, we're first and foremost a supporter of this, because we think it's the best option for the school district and education. Education of our children is very important, it's one of the things that makes the city the city of good living, it's one of the reasons many people have lived here, why we've seen so much population growth in the school districts, and it's frankly, one of the reasons that the real estate values across the city as a whole are as high as they are. So maintaining very good schools is critical to, I guess, the tax revenue for the city. Also, we've already talked about sports, field space being overly constrained. I'm a coach, I've been a coach for seven-plus years, we're actually already over capacity at our field space. We practice starting at 3:30, ending at 10:00 p.m., games start at 8:00 in the morning, they go to dusk. And, we, as we've already talked about, we're already under, have an undersupply of field space, so, and the issue is that the fallback other options actually end up decreasing field space even more. So, in conclusion, we urge the City Council to look at the bigger picture, and work with the San Carlos School District on the land swap, for the betterment of the overall San Carlos community, and help preserve excellent schools, minimize traffic, and add additional much-needed field and park space for recreational activities. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kevin. Tom Morse, followed by Julian Simons.
Hi, my name is Tom Morse, as far as I can tell, I take the prize for resident. I've been here since 1951. I remember when Crestview was a dirt road, if you'd call it a dirt road. But beyond that, that's old stuff. I can, just, since you don't reply, but can you just raise your hand? Who knows, remember Site 10 and now Site 13? One, two, three. Okay, those are former ball fields, I guess they were owned by the schools, they sold it out for, for, for school money, or whatever, and so, those fields are gone. They had a full, let's see, Site 10 was a full baseball, could have had a soccer field. Site 13 up by Mesa Lane, full-size those, those are gone, they'll never be back. I've more recently, in the past five, six years, been doing trailwork in Eden and Big Canyon Park, that's not the point. The point is, that I've also attended these park committees, mostly as a silent person, and two or three times over those periods of years, the, as I know it, Upper Crestview Park issue has come up, and they said, we want tennis courts or a soccer field, we just don't know, we don't have the money to improve it, fine, but let's not sell it. That's one thing they all agreed on, do not sell it, because the land will never be available for a field, anyplace else in the city, that is just not it. So, just for that reason, I say, don't trade it, because you never get it back. Right now, every one of these people own that $18 million view. You put a school on it, the people that live up there, that say there's no kids, well, the kids, the kids, the kids that are inside the building, they'll own the view, but the other whole neighborhood, they will no longer own that view. So I say, keep it for the entire city, not just for the school kids. And I like the school kids, I'm not against that, but, anyway. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Julian Simons, followed by Tara Simons.
Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak tonight, and thank you very much for holding this meeting. It's really clarified a lot of issues, and I think really has helped everyone understand the problem. I'm a resident in, just off Crestview Drive, and have lived there since 2001. My wife and I moved here from just outside London, in the UK. Right from the start, we fell in love with San Carlos, we immediately wanted to live here, and we absolutely fell in love with living just off Crestview Drive. It's, as people have described, just a paradise. And I think, walking my dog in the area twice a day, I've become aware that the area, the North Crestview site, is really a transition zone for animals moving out of the open preserve into the canyon below, and I think building a school there will certainly have an impact on the wildlife in the area. I think also, you know, having looked at both the Tierra Linda site, and at the Crestview site, this is nowhere near a fair swap. The quality of the land is just incomparable, and so I urge you really to do your fiduciary responsibility for San Carlos, which is to sell the land, if you have to, for the most money you can get for it, and not take part in this trade, which really is robbing San Carlos. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Julian. Tara Simons, followed by Michelle Rohr.
Mr. Mayor, members of the committee, I thank you very much for the opportunity to speak with you tonight. Like many other people who are opposing this swap, I too, really don't have anything against education, I work with children, I'm a teacher and a tutor, I really value the whole concept of education, it's a very important part. One thing that I find quite interesting is that those who are in favor, and those who are opposing this swap, do actually agree on one thing, and that is, that this site is an inconvenient location. As many people have said, it's right at the very, very perimeter of our city, it's one of the most remote areas. And looking at the 2030 general plan, other opportunities for the location of the school site would definitely be of a more convenience, and of a better service to students and parents. These locations would also have a reduced environmental impact for our city. The transportation sector contributes to 56% of carbon dioxide emissions, and the 2030 City of San Carlos general plan claims to wish to reduce this vehicular output. A school on North Crestview would increase traffic throughout the city, as their site being proposed by the school district and the city is one of the most remote areas in our city, as I already mentioned. So the concept of better balancing traffic would actually translate to more traffic throughout our city. There are other locations that would, you know, having looked at the general plan, there are other locations that, vacant sites that might be suitable. I will reiterate the opinion of several people who have already spoken, about, once land like this is gone, it cannot be brought back. There's lots of wildlife there, my husband spoke before I did, and, you know, we both were very much, when we came to the peninsula, San Carlos was the city we fell in love with. And, going up to Crestview, where there was so much open space, this peace, tranquility, wildlife, you know, the day we went to look at the house, deer paraded around the back, it was wonderful. So, I understand the need for schools, I would encourage you to try and continue your endeavor to try and locate other locations for the school. And it's a wonderful, congratulations to the charter school for 20 years, of a wonderful history of everything they've achieved. But, in terms of endeavoring for playing fields, Crestview, the North Crestview site could certainly support that, and it would, it would be something that's enjoyable for the whole community. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Tara. Michelle Rohr, followed by Janice Ritchie, or James Ritchie, excuse me.
Good evening, my name is Michelle Rohr, I'm an almost 20-year resident of San Carlos, and I'm a parent of two daughters who are enrolled in San Carlos Charter Learning Center. I brought my 12-year-old daughter, Maya, tonight, this is her first time here in the council chambers, and I brought her because I thought this issue that affects her would be a good example for her to see democracy in action. And I want to thank everyone for being a great example of how a good community can be stewards, indeed, of its school system, as well as its parks. I want to talk about my support for the land swap. I don't think that it's a perfect solution, I don't know that it's the best solution, but it's the solution that I trust, that our school board, and the individuals that have been looking at this, it's the best solution that they've come up with. One of the things that we've experienced on the Terra Linda site, recently, was the loss of the available land for children to play on. When my older daughter started there, we had an enormous area for the children to play on, and recently, because of the growth in the schoolchildren in our district, portables were plopped down on about half of it. And they lost about half of their play structure. We're talking tonight about 400 children that go to San Carlos Learning Center, but we're also talking about, if we choose the option of placing, squeezing the Charter Learning Center onto the Heather School, or the Arundel School, we're talking about those children who live and go to Heather and Arundel, and the loss of the land that they currently play on. Because it will be taken away to build buildings for the 400 charter students. So we like to focus on the 400 charter students, and where they will go to school, wherever they go, if it's squeezed onto an existing school site, will impact those hundreds of children that go to school there, and that they will have less place to play on. So I ask the council, as you consider this, it's, time is tight, we're in a rush, but I think San Carlos is a great community, and one of the things that we need to think about is how we go about this decision, so that we don't fracture the community between those who are parents of children, a growing population, and those that don't have children, who may be supportive of schools, but live near land that's accessible. And thank you for your strong consideration.
Thank you, Michelle. I had mentioned before Jim Ritchie, but Jim actually spoke earlier. So, we'll move on to Barbara Billing, followed by Kate Blonnik. Is Barbara Billing here?
Barbara's not here.
I guess Barbara's not here, we'll hold on to her card. Kate Blonnik, followed by David Crabbe.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you everyone else for being here. I've lived in the city for nine years now, and the school district was part of the reason we came here. We were looking for good schools, as we were going to have children, and that's one of the reasons we still stay here. The schools are growing, we have to put schools somewhere. There are no great options. I think the land swap is by far the best option, because it will distribute traffic and move it out. My son has gone to an in-home daycare up at the top of Crestview, and I would drive up there every day, up and down, and traffic up there is so light compared to anywhere else in the city, that I think it's going to help eliminate some of the other traffic, especially if the school is squeezed into somewhere else and fields are taken away, it's going to be a real deterrent, and I can't imagine what it's going to basically do to the rest of the city. Thank you very much for your consideration.
You're welcome, thank you, Tate. David Crabbe, followed by Jim Buchanan.
I'm the mayor, and members of the council. I'm David Crabbe, I live up on Crestview Drive, I'm not far from the site. I've lived up there for 25 years, but I'm not here tonight to argue against the proposed land swap, because of the impact on the neighborhood. I'm here tonight to argue against a school on that site, from a student's and parents' point of view. Based on all generally accepted land, city planning and school planning principles, the Crestview Drive site is not an appropriate location for a school. There's a strong thrust these days toward improving students' health by improving, by providing students with healthy food and more exercise options. One of the best ways to encourage exercise is to locate schools within safe walking or biking distance to homes of the students they serve. This is the essence of what we call the Safe Routes to School movement, and the importance of the neighborhood school. CLC, by its own definition, says that it is not a neighborhood school, it attracts from all over the city, therefore, the students are not going to be walking to this school, they're not going to be biking to this school. In fact, it's impossible to ride or to bike to this school, because of the location of this property. And I think this is a really, a major downside. The, the only way that students are going to get to this site, there's actually not even any public transportation to this site. The only way students are going to get to this site is their parents are going to drive them to the site, which takes times all the parents' lives, which I'm sure they'd rather be doing something else, and it doesn't give the students any exercise, and it increases traffic up in our part of the world. The other thing I want to talk about is, from the city's point of view, I don't see this land swap makes any sense. It's, if I understand that the Crestview lot is valued considerably greater than the Terra Linda lot, so the city will lose money on the deal. And also, a school on Crestview Drive would generate no long-term tax income to the city. But a use, I would say, from my personal point of view, is to sell the site for market-rate condominiums, similar to what's up there already. The sale would generate a lot of money for the city to use, for whatever purpose made sense, I have my own opinion of what that might be, and it would generate long-term tax revenues to the city. My preference for what it would be, was I would like to see it, you sell that property, take that money, put it into a fund for affordable housing, buy property now on El Camino, and build some affordable housing in the city which we sorely need. It's another, it would help you a long way in terms of meeting your Reno requirements, and I think it would be very beneficial to the city, because the businesses, I just went to a EDAC meeting earlier today, and one of the issues that comes up is, businesses are looking for affordable housing for their employees. So I think you have a win-win, if you could sell it. It's going to be tough to even do that, trying to get an amendment, yeah, approval by the, you know, to negate it as a site, but, anyway, so that's my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Bob told me that I misspoke on Jim, it's John Buchanan, sorry about that.
I'm the mayor.
Followed by Jackie Yon.
Mayor Olbert, and members of the council. I'd like to just hit some high-level issues, to kind of help you limit, or maybe eliminate some of the options you're considering, based on what I have to say. Although I'm a great deal younger than the previous speaker, Mr. Black, we were both around at the time of Lands of Roth and Lincoln, 1972 and '75. So the plans of development of those two units included the, the open space for what was then, what was the old school site nine, and what is now called East, East Crestview Park, or Vista Park. They were specifically put into that plan to eliminate or mitigate the high density of all- of all the units that were put up there on Crestview. And it was a bitter fight about the whole thing and Bob alluded to some of that. And the point of the open space and parks as they are now called is that they're not fungible assets, subject to the city council's whim as to whether they want to barter, trade or sell them. Their importance is the fact that they exist, but they exist there and you cannot substitute that location over to someplace else. I mean, if we could do that, consider what we could do with Big Canyon Park or any number of the parks, Chilton Park or anything else. We can barter and trade and buy and sell all these assets we have, but that's not the point of open space or parks. I'd like to talk about the elimination, the options that require the elimination of the park up there as open space. Currently, the city does not meet its own requirements for general plan acreage per thousand residents. And if you reduce or eliminate that as a park and not replace it with something else of equal size, you're violating your general plan. The issue of two-eighty access, I was on the council and we debated that two-eighty access at length. And I can tell you that that's not really a viable solution. I don't think things have changed, the police problems that it would bring and the fact that Belmont will never give up its hallmark thing is, I would think that would be very obvious. So these are a couple of advisory things I have for you and help you focus and narrow down your options. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Jackie Yon, followed by Judith Selvich. No Jackie, okay? Followed by Adam Alberti. By the way, Adam was on a blue card. I don't know if that means somebody needs to go get him. Okay.
I don't see Adam either.
Well, he's on a blue card. He could be in there.
Oh, in the other room.
You go up.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Yeah. Maybe you could hold one so that council could see it for a minute. In the presentation early this morning, early this evening, we saw a beautiful panoramic view of the Terolinda property in video and since we were missing, we were missing one of the Crestview North Park. So we have two large pictures here that show it looking to the west toward the Santa Cruz Mountains and looking out to the bay where you see San Carlos, the bay, the East Bay and the Mount Diablo and the other mountains. It's absurd in the swap which was being proposed by the city, by the school district to say that this property is equivalent to that and we can swap them. That's the reason a lot of us say the swap is bad for San Carlos. It costs, it's not an equal-to-equal swap. If the school district really wants to have this piece of property rather than keeping it as a unique park in the entire peninsula space, they can sell the hilltop at Terolinda, which was assessed at two million, excuse me, on the basis of putting twenty-four houses there. This property apparently was assessed for eleven million, thirteen million as a park. We don't know that for sure because both the city and the school district have withheld from the public the full appraisals and the reports on these properties despite the appraisal amounts having been made public. But if this is what the school district wants to have, they can sell the hilltop at Terolinda, get twelve million. They can take ten million from their bond issue. So for twenty-two million, they can buy this property and then build their school. Or we can keep this, not isolate this charter learning center up here where the students don't have contact with other students and keep this as a park and develop it for sports facilities or as a premier peninsula park that could have many, many other uses, including neighborhood gardens and a number of other things. Thank you.
Thank you, Judith. Adam Alberti, followed by Pam McGee.
By the way, if you don't have that picture, we have some access that would be happy to get.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you for my two minutes. I just came back from a dinner, though I saw the presentation earlier. So I guess I am of the opinion pro swap, of course, but, you know, in all of the council discussion earlier, we didn't hear much opinion. We really talked about procedures and issues and we can all argue legalities of ballot measures. I'm of the opinion that things could be very different than what the city attorney has said, but before we get there, it'd be nice if we engaged in a process to determine whether this community wants to do that. And it has to be a quick process, but rather than figure out why we can't do it or these arcane issues that might be in the way of it, maybe we should see if we want to take a moment and seize this opportunity. And I'm of the opinion that we should. I'd like to hear from our council about whether they agree. We can all have different opinions for many different ways, but, you know, to me, a school site and more parks solves many issues. I moved here in two thousand and six. My kids are coming out of the system. I probably won't get much use out of whatever happens, but there's somebody like me that's moving into town right now and he has two kids, like I did, and they're in elementary school or about to be. And, you know, the two things that vexed me while I lived here were availability of field spaces and overcrowding of schools. Here's an opportunity to do something about that for future generations. So I don't want to argue about the individual details that we heard tonight, but it'd be nice if we maybe thought about whether we should do this or not. So with that, I implore that discussion to happen with this council. Thank you.
Thank you, Adam. Pam McGee, followed by Mike DeTatta.
Ms. McGee would like to withdraw her request to speak.
I'm sorry.
Withdraw her request to speak.
Pam McGee withdrew, okay. So Mike DeTatta, followed by Katie Stamos.
My name is Mike DeTatta. I've lived in San Carlos for fifteen years now. I have three children that go to Sequoia High School, Central Middle School and White Oaks. All of my kids have been brought up through the San Carlos schools. I'm a longtime coach here in the town. I've coached baseball and soccer for twelve years. I kind of did some quick math and I've coached over six hundred different families and six hundred different kids. I volunteered over six thousand hours towards youth sports and like Adam just said, one of the main things that vexes our sports community is a lack of fields. And the land swap seems like a great opportunity to create more field space since there's more families moving here and more kids being involved in youth sports. And I'm very much in favor of it and thank you for your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Katie Stamos, followed by John Hoffman.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is Katie Stamos. I'm an Arundel parent of three children. I'm an active volunteer, but the volunteer role that for me sheds most light on the situation is the two mornings a week that I spend opening doors in the traffic circle. At least once per day, I see a threat or a near miss or an averted tragedy as very young children make their way onto campus. Each year, the traffic situation becomes progressively worse for our children as they travel from their homes to their schools. The addition of another school on our campus would be catastrophic. As I look ahead to five years of sending my children to Terolinda, I see a traffic nightmare for pedestrians currently, much less if another school is added to the mix. It is a tenet of any civilized society that when a situation is getting progressively less safe for children, that the adults act. It must further be pointed out that we all benefit both financially and intangibly from having a strong school system, far more than the proceeds of any one's sale, as we have seen from our city's immediate history. For fifty years, school lands have been shortsightedly sold off and our city leaders, I realize not you personally, but in the past, our city leaders have not looked to the future. And yet here we sit with our schools slowly becoming overcrowded as the traffic risks compound for the community at large. This is a unique situation that requires a unique solution and unique civic leadership from this council. We are depending upon you to see the entire picture. The strongest point I wish to make tonight is that this decision must not be made, or must, excuse me, must be made in the public interest. We must have a plan to effectively educate our children and ensure their safety, a basic need and right of every person, no matter what their age or their ability to speak coherently in front of this esteemed body. I ask you to consider the next fifty years. Tens of thousands of schoolchildren who are not in attendance tonight but will be the ones in a hundred thousand separate moments who are in the center of those crosswalks, walking to school on hopelessly impacted streets. I ask that you do something. The traffic situations at Arundel and Terolinda represent an accident waiting to happen. The land swap appears to be the best opportunity, but however your conversations go, please do not do nothing. Please act. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Katie. John Hoffman, followed by Andrew Taylor.
Mr. Mayor, councilman, John Hoffman. When I moved up to Crestview forty-two years ago, fifty yards up the hill, there was a fence and beyond that, a horse ranch. If I had fussed about the development of the hill, many of the folks here tonight might not have had homes in San Carlos. There is no question that there is a need for more facilities for our educational program. Charter schools are progressive. They are one of the few bright lights in an otherwise hidebound system of rules and regulations which do not serve the best interests of our students in many cases. The city and the school district are charged with doing the best job they can for the citizens of San Carlos. And I believe that cooperation between the two is not only desirable, but absolutely essential if we are to develop the best city we possibly can. I have no doubt that the five of you have good heads on your shoulders and will make a sensible decision. Of course, you know that you're damned if you do and you're damned if you don't, but if you make a decision that does not please everybody, you will probably have made a good decision. And if you try and please everybody, you will make an awful decision. I support the land swap because I believe the children and the education of the children is more important than a small piece of land and views that I think everyone really realizes are not there forever. Development, progress, marches on. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Andrew Taylor, followed by Irene Chen.
My upfront disclaimer is that I also have two kids and support the need for further fields and open space. Though I'm a bit surprised that the city council, given what I've heard, also, as one of the other speakers mentioned, that the capital spending deficit of the city is even greater than what's in the current budget. There's simply just no funds available. To the sports groups, I wonder what, really wonder what you've been promised, but given the fiscal reality, how can you believe for one minute that you're going to get any more sports fields out of this transaction? While there seems to be unanimous agreement that the traffic needs to be improved in San Carlos, yet here again, we're considering pushing another school project into the west side. So why has the district not considered something on the east side to reverse these traffic flows? As a taxpayer in part over the Crestview site, it is time that the school district stand on its own two feet. We already have two parcel taxes on our property taxes. What is currently proposed is nothing more than a backdoor subsidy on the back of all San Carlos citizens. People have alluded to traffic studies. However, I'm sure that many of the traffic impacts can be alleviated through making the district pay for the necessary traffic mitigation, something that they don't want to do, hence again, the free ride. But here, to those who speak of losing space at present schools, I would say there's a very simple solution which has been down elsewhere and that is to put a second story on existing school buildings. When you look at Heather, it's all spread out. The same thing is true at Terolinda. Twice in the last year, I've been nearly broadsided on Crestview simply pulling out of my driveway. Both instances, they were parents with kids in their car and one time with parents, kids and texting on the phone. This is just going to add more traffic coming up the street. The swap proposed is a monopoly board equivalent of trading Boardwalk for Baltic Avenue. If the real estate market uses the term million-dollar views, the Crestview property has multimillion-dollar views. Some of the best times of my life were spent playing ultimate frisbee at a park in Laguna Beach called Top of the World with three hundred and sixty-degree views of Orange County and the Pacific Ocean and is a crown jewel of the Laguna Park system. This is an opportunity for San Carlos to replicate the same. Finally, whilst the appraisals may be shielded from PRA requests, given that the information has already been made public and for transparency's sake, I believe that these documents should maybe be available for public review. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew. Irene Chen, followed by Tricia Hojo.
Hi, good evening. My name is Irene Chen and I've been a citizen of San Carlos for ten years. First of all, I want to say thank you for your service to San Carlos and the time and energy you put into serving the city. I'm going to make a point, not opposing or favoring the land swap, but it is a point on process and how do we get to a good decision quickly that represents the people. Clearly, this is a really hot topic with passionate people on both sides. Earlier tonight, the point I was most alarmed about is I had heard that in order for this to go to a ballot in November to make a decision one way or the other, you would need four out of five to agree to put it on the ballot. So the point I would make is I would urge you to please support putting this on the ballot if that is a necessary step and let the voices of the people be heard. I think the biggest disappointment is if two out of the five of you decided not to do that, just because this is such a complex topic and I think there are many people who would want to express their opinion. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Irene. Tricia Hojo, followed by Dan Belleville.
Good evening. My name is Tricia Hojo and I am currently Heather PTA president. Heather School is comprised of families that live off Crestview. I represent two hundred and thirty-seven PTA members and I just wanted to inform you that at our last PTA meeting, our members voted unanimously to endorse the swap. Therefore, I would encourage you to pursue all channels to make this swap happen for our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Tricia. Dan Belleville, followed by Rob Werner.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Thank you very much for your time this evening. Another night yet away from home. I am a San Carlos resident for over twenty years. I'm married, I have two boys. I'm here in favor of a land swap or something that would provide primarily more space for the children in San Carlos and then if we can meet the school district's needs, that would be terrific too because they're two very important issues. I serve on the Little League Board of Directors and my boys won't benefit from my comments tonight, but I looked at my email tonight, all of us have sub-email boxes, and I'm the city liaison for Little League. And I have about fifteen hundred emails just since the last summer trying to juggle space for the kids to play baseball. You know, when I was a kid, baseball fields were baseball and now it's for ten other different sports. So we all have to get along, we all have to share our time and it's a difficult thing to do. There's almost a crisis with our field space. One of my sons played Pony League and as you know, it serves as a part-time dog park. And he hated to play left field because there's dog poop everywhere on one of the baseball fields in Crestview, or excuse me, in Burton Park, thank you. And unless you know these things, unless- And unless you know these things, unless you're juggling space and you walk the fields and you see the dogs, or if you look at Burton today, it's beautiful because we had a couple weeks of rain. But if you walk out on Burton in the next couple of weeks, in my over 20 years here, you're seeing a significant decline in all the field space that we have because there's so much use. So it's not an easy thing to do, and I know it's difficult. I'd like to share one of the things as a homeowner, and that is, I live a baseball throw on a good day with my old arm now to White Oak School. And I personally, in public safety, made the decision to close White Oak because it used to traverse right through the middle of the school, because it was a safety issue talked about with a Rundle. I made that decision. I was in public safety in the community at the time, and I shut it down, much to the chagrin of my neighbors, because they like to travel quickly up the main artery to their homes. And what did I do? I at least quadrupled the traffic in front of my house. The school district also told us, when they had a bond measure, that they were going to get rid of the temporary trailers, but they didn't. There's a zero lot line, there's ugly trailers out there, and so it's a not-in-my-backyard thing. It impacted me as a citizen and as Little League, so I implore you to try to create some more field space and meet the school district needs. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Dan. Rob, excuse me, Rob Werner, followed by Daniel DeBreyer.
Good evening, Mayor and council. My name's Rob Werner. I'm fairly new to San Carlos. I married into a longtime San Carlos family, and we live right off of Melundy. I'm a CPA, I'm a corporate controller at a public, or a private company down Palo Alto right now, and I have three young children, an eight-year-old, a four-year-old, and a three-year-old. I am pro swap, because when I look at this, I look at that we have two options, listening to everything I've heard tonight. One option is to do nothing, which, believe it or not, I'm a beneficiary of, because I live off of Melundy. Or two, we build a school up there. The option of, and correct me if I'm wrong, or somebody can correct me if I'm wrong, the option of selling the property for $18 million seems to be a moot point, given everything I've heard tonight, because frankly, I don't know if we can get that valuation, given that it would require a referendum. Another thing I think about, and, and I've had discussions, I got involved in the school board last year when they were going through their, their master plan, and I had some concerns, but the one thing I do say about the, the one thing I do want to say about the school board is they do have our children's best interests in mind. While I may or may not agree with all of the ways they approach everything, I do have full confidence in everything that they do. And one thing to think about throughout this process is, you know, one thing I hear is the valuations of our homes, right? The valuations of our homes are largely driven by the demand in this area, which is largely driven, primarily driven by the good schools that we have. And something to think about, which is, you know, putting the charter school up on top of Crestview will impact me. The traffic situation right now, I have to go out, I cut across Melundy every morning to get out, and there's ways to address that, but it's not going to be so much so it'll actually benefit the rest of the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Rob. Daniel DeBreyer, followed by Kira Sabo.
Hello, my name is Danielle DeBreyer.
DeBreyer, sorry.
No problem. I'm a supporter of the land swap. I was a teacher at Britton Acres, and I am currently on the board of the Charter Learning Center, and I have three children who attend it. As you already know, we are currently housed on the TL campus, along with the Tierra Linda Middle School, the District Special Ed Preschool, and Edison Montessori Preschool. We have extreme overcrowding, which has impacted everyone who attends these schools. This overcrowding is, is only going to get worse as the number of schoolchildren in San Carlos grows every year. The school district must expand, and space is limited. If we place our school on the Crestview site, we will help to distribute the children throughout San Carlos and offer a wonderful addition to the community through field development and park development at TL. I realize, as people have stated, this may not be the perfect option, but it is a good option, and it is an option that will accommodate, you know, many students and will improve our current situation significantly. The traffic is horrendous, as other people have mentioned, and the safety concerns as a result of this traffic are serious. We have a committee currently that is working to mitigate some of the traffic concerns that we have as children are constantly put in danger. So I, as I stated, I am a proponent of the land swap, and I hope that you guys will consider the future of San Carlos children who are not able to speak tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Danielle. Kira Sabo, followed by Deepak Bhagwara Supu. And I, you can correct me, because I'm sure I got that wrong.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Kira Sabat, and I am, have been a member of San Carlos, the community, for four years now. I have two children, one school age, and one who will be in two years. I'm also a member of the San Carlos Charter Learning Center Parent Resource Team, which is our equivalent of the PTA. And what I'd like to say tonight is not necessarily something that has not already been said, so I will basically restate some things, but perhaps in a slightly different way. We have a problem. We have a growing population, and we do not have adequate space currently to house our existing population and a growing population. We're looking at a lot of imperfect solutions to address this issue, as well as looking at what the community needs in general, which is park space, field space, and a continued growth in a very, in a positive community. I believe that the land swap is the best imperfect solution that is on the table currently for several reasons. One, I believe that it will better distribute traffic throughout the city. I know it's been thrown around that we have 400 students, but that doesn't mean that that's 400 cars, it's less families. And I would urge you to think about the fact that a large percentage of those families are likely dropping their kids off at school and using Club Drive or Melundy or others to get to 280 to go to work themselves. Additionally, I think that it provides an opportunity for future growth of students in the district. Any solution is not going to be ideal, but by creating a new space, we allow the opportunity for additional growth, not a short-term gap. Lastly, I would like to say, as a member of the charter community, I have seen firsthand the respect that the school fosters for the environment and for the community, and I am sure that they will continue that should the land swap go through and be positive neighbors to those in the Crestview community as well as to the environment. Thank you.
Thank you, Kira. Deepak, I'm going to let you pronounce your last name. Sorry.
It's long. Hi, I'm Deepak Bhagwara Supu, and I live walking distance to the Crestview site. So I oppose the land swap, and I'd like to also mention why and also some other suggestions. It seems like a number of issues are being mixed in this, in this discussion, which I think we all agree that we want schools, better schools for kids and all the positive things that are talked about, but the Crestview land site is not the only solution to this. I mean, if you want to think about it simply, so let me just tell you, I grew up in the Northeast. We had school buses as kids. We, we had real winters, snow, rain, cold weather. Kids, we just, we just stood up and wait for the buses. I mean, what I don't understand is why with beautiful weather in California, you can't have school buses here. In fact, it, we're to the point now where parents take school buses, like the Google Buses, to work, and they drop off their kids. This is the opposite of what the world should be like. So I think there's some common sense solutions here that could solve a lot of these things. The Crestview piece of property is a park site already, so just develop it as parks and fields. That solves the field problem. Get school buses to take kids to school, that solves some of the crowding problems at, at the drop-off points. And as the guy that just mentioned before me, build multiple levels on schools. When I grew up as a kid, there were three or four levels per school. I mean, kids can walk up steps, maybe you put the younger kids on the first floor. These are simple problems. They're not that complicated. And if you start taking them apart and analyzing, there's other solutions than an all-or-nothing thing where you have to give away the, the city property for a song, and it is the best view in the entire city. I mean, the people that live there know that. So the other thing I would say is that the, the whole way that this has been handled by, in the city and the school board talking to the community, there's probably better ways to do this. We live in an age where there's, we all have internet access, and there's community blogs, there's Wikipedia. There could be ways of collecting ideas electronically and, and also disseminating information electronically that have not been done. I mean, there's, there's much better ways of, of communicating to and from, as opposed to only having it in here where it gets polarized. Thank you.
Thank you, Deepak. All right. I'm going to go back, do we have any more cards, Crystal? Okay. I'm just going to go back and poll some of the folks who were, were not here before, just to make sure they hadn't just stepped out briefly. Barbara Billing? No? And Jackie Yon? Okay. Well, I, thank you very much, everybody. Before we move on to the council discussion here, I do want to say that I was very impressed with the way everybody followed the protocol. I was very impressed the way everybody was following the cards. Kind of had wondered how that was going to work. Guess it actually worked reasonably well. So at this point, it's time for the diocese to decide what it wants to do and what kind of discussion we want to have. Yeah. And, you know, we have no, since we're not taking action tonight, we are just discussing and trying to decide on direction, we don't need to make motions and whatnot on resolution. So feel free to have at it whoever wants to jump in. Go for it.
Turn my mic back on. I suppose the reason I didn't have a whole lot of questions is because even before coming here, based on what the city attorney sent to us, my inclination was to put this to the voters. And if I understand the procedure correctly, and that sort of the ins and outs and the technicalities, we wouldn't necessarily have to put it to the voters if we wanted to sell it or swap it with the school and allow them to develop it, because this nuance in California law that allows a school to do with land what they want to, never mind what city zoning is and so forth. So that would certainly be an option, is simply just make the deal with the school and let the school do what they intend to do with the site. But I don't think that action, if we were to take it, would stay within the spirit of why the law says what it does about parkland, if you have something zoned as parkland. And I also think it would be not very respectful to the points that Mr. Black made and, and John, his name is escaping, no, not John Hoffman, although he was formerly on the council too, but.
John Buchanan.
John Buchanan talked about that this land was set aside as parkland regarding a development deal, and it was, my understanding from talking to Bob on a 101 level, is that it was a very hotly debated issue, got the community involved and so forth. So I think for those reasons, if we're going to use the land for anything, whether it's a sale to a developer or making a deal with the school, we need to respect the community and go to the community and, and ask for their take on it. I, I think it's one of those cases, one of, one of those instances where that would be the right thing to do.
Fair enough. Others? I don't need you staring at your.
Yeah, no, that's fine. I'm, I'm happy to sort of talk a little bit. I thought this was a great discussion, and, and I was really impressed with the public comment. I, I learned a lot. And the short answer is I, I think that we should move forward with putting.